Hey. I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight. We're going to re-convene the meeting and proceed on with the hearing. And to that end, we need to have Augie. Will you call the roll? Just to make sure for the record, we know what board members are here.
Yes, sir. Bruner. Ellis. Farnum. Lawton. Patrick. Voight.
Present.
Quorum.
Scott, I think that takes care of the part that I was supposed to do, so...
Yep.
You're welcome to proceed, sir.
All right. Thank you Chairman Voight. Good evening, folks. This is the second night of the public hearing regarding an application for citing approval to the Edgar County Board submitted by State Line Energy Center LLC, a subsidiary of IPA Power. And on the first night last Thursday, we heard from five witnesses, four of whom were called by the applicant, and one of whom, a gentleman named Mike Maggert, was called by me to testify about his interest in this project, specifically that he owns a ground and has leased it pending approval by the Edgar County Board. So tonight, we're going to hear from several more witnesses from the applicant and then from members of the public. Mr. Uphoff, do you have, let's see, do you have two or three witnesses that you're wishing to call?
Right now, I would say we have three witnesses, but we may need to only call two.
Okay, very good. All right. Any preliminary matters before we begin with witnesses, Mr. Uphoff?
I don't believe so.
Mr. Kite?
Yes, sir.
All right, very... Just to remind everybody to...
Yes.
Put your cell phones on airplane or whatever you do.
Yep, silence your phones, just makes it easier for Courtney, our court reporter this evening. We're borrowing her from Moultrie County. Also, one other thing, the question has come to the chairman about transcripts of these hearings. And Holly, who took the hearing last Thursday, generally turns them around and submits them to the county within seven days. So hopefully, it will be to the county within seven days and perhaps online either by Thursday or Friday at the very latest. And Courtney has endeavored to get her transcript of what we take down tonight also within seven days, so it would be by next Monday, the 27th. So you'll be able to review the transcripts of the public hearing from last Thursday and from tonight's session online. And Mr. Griffin, do we have a, is there a website that they could go to that would have this?
Eventually, yeah, we do have a website, but I don't know how quick our IT person will get that put up there. But I will, I will encourage him just as soon as possible. With the size of the meeting, it may be in Part 1, Part 2, that type of thing. Yeah, we will get it up there.
And do you have a web address for this?
I do.
Yes, sir.
Are you ready for it now?
Yes, sir.
It's all spelled out. EdgarCountyIllinois.com.
No abbreviations.
No abbreviations.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
I've got a question. Augie, will the video also be on the website?
Well, yes. Was that what you were asking?
I was asking about when the court reporters email you the transcripts.
Yes, yes, we'll put that up there. And the video will also be up there. I misunderstood you, I apologize. We'll get them both put up there.
Okay, very good. Good question. Thank you, Mr. Farnum. Thank you, Mr. Griffin. All right. Mr. Uphoff, you may resume with witnesses. Call your next witness, please.
Thank you. This time, we would call Ann Rowley.
Good evening. Could you please raise your... Thank you. Do you solidly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give shall be true? Okay, very good. Could you state your names spelling first and last names?
Ann Rowley. A-N-N-E-R-O-W-L-E-Y.
Go ahead, Mr. Uphoff.
Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Rowley. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Doing well. Wanted to start off by asking you to please provide your education and experience in terms of the background to help everybody understand what it is that you do and what you'll be testifying to this evening.
Yep, I'll go right along with that. My name is Ann Rowley. I am a project manager and senior project engineer here at TRC Companies. TRC was engaged by IPA Power to prepare the preliminary decom plan and cost estimate. To start off, though, I wanted to go over a little bit of my background. I have a bachelor's in civil engineering from Valparaiso University and a master's from University of Wisconsin-Madison in water resources engineering. In addition to that, I'm a professional engineer in three states, Illinois, Wisconsin, and Indiana. I've been with TRC for over eight years and worked on and reviewed site civil design and stormwater modeling for a variety of industries, including renewables. I'm here as the professional engineer that has been on the team that prepared the preliminary decommissioning plan for State Line Energy Center.
Ann, it's okay if I call you Ann?
Yes.
Ann, have you testified before in a hearing such as this?
Correct, yes.
And about how many times would you say?
About 10 a year.
And in terms of the decommissioning plan, was that the primary purpose of your testimony here this evening?
That is correct.
Okay. Then with that, Mr. Keynes, I'd ask to certify Ms. Rowley as an expert in civil site design and in this particular scenario, providing the decommissioning plan.
Mr. Kite, do you have any questions for the witness?
Just a couple.
Yes, sir.
How long have you been a professional engineer in Illinois?
Past four years.
And so your license, as they all do for professional engineers, expires on November 30th, right?
That is correct. Yep.
How many hearings have you testified in of this nature?
About 10 a year, so 20, 25.
How many projects have you done a decommissioning plan for that are solar-related?
This year alone, probably 30.
And how many in relation to battery storage?
Only this one.
Other questions?
Do you have any objection to her being certified as an expert witness?
I do not.
All right, Ms. Rowley will be certified as an expert witness, and she will be afforded the 30-minute time limitation for her direct testimony, not including cross-examination and questions from the board or from Mr. Kite. So you have 30 minutes of direct testimony, Mr. Uphoff. Go right ahead.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Rowley, then, let's start walking through your slideshow in relation to the preparation of the preliminary decommissioning plan in this case. And you stated it, and I've just referenced it, but this is the preliminary decommissioning plan, is that correct?
That is correct.
And so is it, as you understand it, typically the process would be you provide this preliminary decommissioning plan, and then, once the project gets closer to where it's submitting for a building permit, there would be more definitive engineer drawings and definitive equipment information, is that right?
That is correct.
And then at that time, there would be a review of the decommissioning plan and revisions, if necessary, to make it more accurate up to that point in that stage?
That is correct.
And then, is it also your understanding that typically the county would then enlist their own engineer who would review the decommissioning plan and all the same information that you reviewed to determine whether or not they're in agreement with the proposals that you've put forward?
That is correct.
Okay. So with that understanding, then, could you please help walk us through how it is that you reached your determinations as to this preliminary decommissioning plan?
We took IPA Power's current site civil design that they prepared as part of the special use permit application. That included, among other things, 16-foot-wide gravel access roads, all the panel layouts, the best storage area, the substation. We took all that design, we counted up all the different numbers, costs, the quantities, everything else, and added that into a spreadsheet that we then took the amount of time it would take with different crews, current Edgar County labor rates, and calculated that into a spreadsheet that then took out the values for the different items for the task to decommission the site itself.
And so when you're working through some of these calculations, are there sort of some industry standards that you would tend to refer to as it relates to some of these materials?
Yes. So like I said previously, we use the labor rates for Edgar County. Typically, we use whatever the prevailing wages for the county as if it were to be decommissioned and the county needed to do so, it would be the prevailing wages of the county using it. In addition to that, we did, you know, include contractor costs such as profit, overhead and management, their own insurance. Those are all standard things that would likely occur if, for whatever reason, it did need to be decommissioned. Among other things, we did have things like erosion control, that those are known values that we include in that cost estimate. They have it on their site plan, so we were able to then include those values as well.
And some of those factors, labor rates and things like that, obviously, those change throughout the life of a project, is that correct?
That is correct.
And so in addition to this being a preliminary decommissioning plan, even once the project were to be approved, is it your understanding that under the law and what's typically enforced by counties is that there would be renewals or reviews of the decommissioning proposal throughout the life of the project?
That is correct.
And in your experience, is there a typical frequency at which you see those?
It's typically every five years after the first tenure, if not sooner, depending on the county and agreements made.
So sometimes there can be, you know, more frequent reviews of those materials, is that right?
That is correct.
And one of the things that you mentioned before was in terms of access roads and some of the materials that are added to the property for these projects, are there times when landowners could choose to keep those items on the property and not remove them?
That is correct. At the time of decommissioning, the current developer or owner of the project can ask the landowner if they want to keep the roads for whatever reason. If they do want to keep them, then yes, it would stay on the property.
So then, after going through and creating the spreadsheet, then, were you able to come up with some top-line numbers as to the proposed decommissioning amounts?
Yes. The total gross cost was $25,249,600.40 currently.
Okay. No further questions.
All right, very good. Thank you, Mr. Uphoff. All right, there will be questions now from Ms. Rowley. First, questions come from members of the Edgar County Board. Ladies and gentlemen, any questions regarding decommissioning? Ms. Ellis?
Yes. Are you able to answer questions about the physical decommissioning process or only the calculations?
I can answer a little bit about the physical decommissioning. What's your question about it?
Okay, so I understand on the solar panels and such, you pull posts and deal with all of that. That makes sense. So when you're building the battery storage, are you having to move dirt?
Typically, yes. I mean, there's a minimal, I mean, grading is typically tried to be minimal just for the AMA.
Okay. And that soil stays on the site?
For the most part.
Yes?
Yes, sorry.
Okay. So the soil will not leave Edgar County?
No.
Okay. How does decommissioning work on that? Are you having to excavate quite a bit of gravel concrete?
So you do have to excavate out the roads if those aren't allowed to stay on property. So you kind of excavate those to 18 inches low grade and get all the gravel out with that. But minimally, I mean, there's not much grading to be done for solar anyways, so they try and keep the current topography and everything else of the site the same because you don't want to mess with flow patterns or anything else. So in the AMA, it kind of lays out that you minimal grading and try and keep everything the same.
Is there very much, are there very, are utilities, are very many of the utilities buried? Or is it mostly above ground?
I haven't looked at the site plan in detail, but currently, there's some of both. And it would be, you know, later down the line with the building permit, that'd be expanded upon. And the electrical design's normally done much further down the line, not at an SUP phase.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Ellis, for your questions. Any other questions from members of the Edgar County Board? All right. Questions from members of units of local government, including school districts. Questions from interested parties. Those are folks who are from Edgar County or live in Edgar County, county residents, and those who own ground in Edgar County. Are there any questions for Ms. Rowley regarding decommissioning estimates and the decommissioning process? Yes, Mr. Wright, is it?
Yes, thank you. My name is Phil Wright. I'm a lifelong resident of Edgar County and actually have property that's pretty close to this proposed site. My question is, in the event of a decommission, when you take it all apart, how long does it have? Say you stack up the panels or ivory you do when you start to decommission, how long can it stay on property before it has to be moved?
That AMA says 12 months is how long you have.
From the last panel that's removed or from when the first panel is removed?
I don't believe it's actually prescriptive as to beginning versus end.
So in other words, if you took the first panel out January 1st, whatever year, and then it took you a year to get it all taken down, you've got basically two years and maybe more to remove it from the site. Is that correct?
I'd have to look at the AMA to be sure.
Okay. Another thing in the decommissioning process, I don't know how, can you ask questions on, answer questions on like the real estate taxes and things like that?
No, we have another person coming up for that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wright. Mr. Uphoff, are you endeavoring to find the answer to the question that Mr. Wright posed about how long did they have? Well, it's 12 months. 12 months from when?
That's what I'm checking, yes.
Okay, all right. We'll get that answer for you, Mr. Wright. Thank you for your questions. All right, any other questions from folks in the public who are from Edgar County or own ground in Edgar County? All right. Folks from outside of the county with questions for Ms. Rowley? Oh, yes, yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Brian Quinn. My mother is trustee of the Shue Family Farm just south of my place over there.
Mr. Quinn, how do you spell your first name? Because some guys spell it with an I, some spell it with a Y.
I spell it the right way with an I.
Because the court reporter has to have it, and we try as best we can around here to be accurate. Go ahead, Mr. Quinn, with your question.
But you mentioned that at the 15, 20, 25-year mark, typically, there's reassessment done of the decommissioning cost?
Typically, yes.
And is that provided to the county board so that they can ensure that IPA is adjusting that decommissioning cost and funding?
The county can kind of prescribe how they want it done, but typically, yes, it's provided to the county.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, thank you, Mr. Quinn. Any other questions from the public? All right, Edgar County staff and consultants, Mr. Kite?
I've got a few, but I'm, hopefully, it won't be too long. So if I understand you, Ms. Rowley, you are the engineer from TRC that physically prepared the decommissioning cost estimates and the plan?
I was the engineer that reviewed it. My team prepared it.
Who on the team prepared it?
David Kimlinger, and he was the main engineer, and then I believe it was Damon Howard for the QC on this one.
Okay. And if I'm understanding it correctly, this is one of the technical submissions as part of the application, is that correct?
Correct.
All right. And it's a document that requires a fairly high amount of engineering that goes into it in the sense of making cost estimations and how to do this. In other words, a regular person off the street wouldn't be able to prepare it, fair?
Correct, yeah, because you also need to be able to understand what's on the CAD drawings and everything else, too, in terms of the overall site design and what the line work's showing.
So it requires an engineer to review and prove, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Is the other tech, is the sound study one of the other technical submission that's part of it?
I didn't prepare that one, but yes.
Okay.
It is technical in nature.
Are you familiar with the Siding Statute in Illinois? The Illinois Commercial Solar Energy Facility Siding Statute?
Yes.
And there's a provision in the Siding Statute, and I can provide it to you if you want, but it basically says when a developer comes to the county for the public hearing, they have to have an executed AMA for short. Fair?
Yes.
And you're familiar with the AMA, is that correct?
That is correct.
The AMA, for example, one of its requirements, and if you want me to provide you a copy of it, I can, but one of the requirements in the AMA is that there be a deconstruction plan provided. Is that right? And one of the requirements also with the AMA is that deconstruction plan then be provided to the county as part of its, the public hearing process. Is that fair?
That is correct.
And if I'm understanding it correctly, then this exhibit, I believe it's E, is the deconstruction?
Or decommissioning, yes.
For decommissioning, but it's the deconstruction plan as it's phrased in the AMA. This exhibit E is the deconstruction plan you've provided. Is that fair?
That's correct.
Are you familiar with the Illinois Professional Engineering Practices Act?
Yes.
I'll come back to that, but one of the requirements in the AMA, for example, as part of that deconstruction plan, is that during the permit process, you would file with the county this deconstruction plan, and that's what this exhibit E is. I think we already covered that part, right?
Yes.
And one of the requirements in the AMA states that the original construction costs of the facility shall be included in that deconstruction plan. That's part of the definition of a deconstruction plan, is that right?
The cost estimate.
Well, it's actually a little bit different. So under the definition of deconstruction plan, if you want, I can give you a copy if you want, but under the definition of deconstruction plan, subparagraph 1II states, "The original construction costs of the facility are to be prepared by the professional engineer included in the deconstruction plan." Is that correct?
I am not aware of that, no.
Okay. Do you want to see that provision? No, give me a minute. Here, you can have, I could show this to you, and I'll, you can review that while I find another copy of it. So there on page, I forget what page it's on, but the highlighted provision, page 4, there you go. It requires, it gives the definition of a deconstruction plan, is that right?
That is correct.
And then part, I think it's part II. Can you read that into the record?
The original construction costs of the facility.
Okay. I can, can I take that part back?
Yeah.
I'll find another copy here for you. I think it's, I think it's in your application, if that helps. Can you point to me in your exhibit E where the original construction costs are delineated out in the plan?
They are not there.
Okay. I want to refer you then to page, I think it's on page 6. Do we have an extra copy of that AMA? Okay, I'm going to direct your attention then to page 6. At the very bottom of the page. In section 6, it states, it talks about rerouting and permanent repair of agricultural drainage tiles. And it essentially has standards and policies, and it requires for the identification of those tiles. But last sentence states that "All drainage tile lines identified in this manner shall be shown in the construction and deconstruction plans." Can you point to me in exhibit E where the drain tile lines are identified?
They are not identified because there's not a site plan in exhibit E.
Okay. Is there one that identifies drain tiles within the application itself? If you know?
I do not know.
I'm going to turn your attention then to page number 10. Page number 10, section 15. Let me know when you're there.
I am there.
Page 15, I'm sorry, page 10, section 15, subparagraph D states, "The deconstruction plans must include provisions for the removal of all weed-controlled equipment used in the facility, including weed-controlled fabrics or other ground covers." Can you point to me in exhibit E where that weed-control provisions are found?
There is no weed control currently prescribed for the facility, so they were not in the cost estimates.
So at this point in time, were you here on Thursday, on the 17th, when we talked, I'm sorry, the 16th?
Yes.
When we talked about how there's, will be at some point in time a weed management plan?
Yes.
Okay. But at this time, in the decommissioning plan...
Yes, in the preliminary decommissioning plan.
It's not provided for?
That's correct.
Okay, we talked, I asked you previously if you're familiar with the Illinois Professional Engineering Practices Act. You indicated that you were, is that right?
That is correct.
And we talked earlier about how this decommissioning plan is one of, at least the two, technical submissions within the application. Is that fair?
There's the site plan as well, but yes.
In the Illinois Professional Engineering Practices Act, under the Technical Submissions Section, section 15, it states, "Subsection C, no officer, board, commission, or other public entity that receives technical submissions shall accept for filing or approval any technical submissions relating to services requiring involvement of a professional engineer that did not bear the seal and signature of a professional engineer license under this act." Under sub, I'm sorry, in your, in exhibit E, the decommissioning plan, can you point to me where it is signed and sealed?
It is not sealed as it is not required by the county in the AMA to do so.
Okay, but I'm referring to a state law, separate state law, Illinois Professional Engineering Practices Act, which states that a technical submission does have to be signed and sealed. So can you point to me where in the exhibit E it is signed and sealed?
It is not signed and sealed in the exhibit.
And then, I'm going to refer you back to the Illinois Siding Statute that we talked about earlier. You're familiar with that statute?
In terms of the setbacks and things, correct.
Are you familiar with other provisions of the statute?
Mainly the setbacks statute, because that's what most applies to my work.
Okay. Are you familiar with the paragraph, it's in paragraph G, that states, "A request for citing approval or a special use permit for a commercial wind energy facility or a commercial solar energy facility or modification of an approved citing or special use permit shall be approved if the request is in compliance with the standards and conditions imposed in this act, the zoning ordinance adopted consistent with this code, and the conditions imposed under state and federal statutes and regulations." Are you familiar with that provision?
Yes.
Okay. And we talked a little bit how the statute requires an AMA to be provided in the deconstruction plan provided therein. And you would agree with me that not all of the requirements of the AMA have been provided at this point in time. Is that fair?
That is fair.
And you'll agree with me that at this point in time, that the signing and sealing of the decommissioning plan has not occurred and is therefore not complete under the state law. Is that fair?
Yes.
Okay, I have no further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kite.
Mr. Uphoff, it's your turn for redirect examination.
Sure. Just a moment, please.
Absolutely.
Ms. Rowley, in relation to the, you were asked about the siting of the drain tiles, drainage tiles, is that correct?
That is correct.
And you were referred to the bottom of page six of the AMA. Do you have that there, or no?
Looked at. Yep.
Okay. And so there, it indicated that, under subsection A, it states that "Prior to construction, the facility owner shall work with the landowner to identify drainage tiles traversing the property," and then it goes on from there. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, so the beginning part of that says, "Prior to construction, the facility owner shall work with the landowner."
That is correct, and that is my understanding.
Right, and so typically, when you've been dealing with this, you've operated in that where prior to construction would mean after a special use permit has been granted and a building permit was being sought. Is that correct?
That is correct.
In relation to the request about the signing and sealing, the, is it typical to seal a preliminary plan as opposed to an official plan for a technical submission?
It is not typical unless the county requires it.
And as far as you're aware, did the, was there any specific requirement from Edgar County in this particular instance that the proposed preliminary decommissioning plan be sealed by an engineer?
There was not.
What would it take in order for that document to be sealed?
We could seal it tonight.
So if need be, you, you could seal it?
Yes.
As of right now?
Yes.
Okay. No further questions.
Thank you. Back to you, Mr. Kite. Are you satisfied with the responses?
I'm sorry, Mr. Keynes, I forgot with Mr. Kite's questions, I've failed to respond to Mr. Wright's question.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. So in the decommissioning, excuse me, not the decommissioning, in the AMA, Mr. Wright had asked you a question about completion of decommissioning or deconstruction. Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
And it's, it indicates 12 months, that it be completed within 12 months. Is that the terminology, is, understand it?
Yes, that is correct.
All right, so, and to complete decommissioning, you would have to have all the materials off of the site, and the site returned back to the same, or substantially the same condition. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So you wouldn't be able to like, take down all the panels, stack them on the property, and then leave them sitting there for another year, because that wouldn't be then completed within the 12 months, is that right?
Correct.
So completion within 12 months means all the materials that are going to be removed get removed off of the site.
Correct.
And you were asked by the board member a couple of questions about, the first, I think, was a little bit about removal of the roads, but then there's also a portion of that question which you referred to, removal of concrete. Do you recall that part?
I think she was asking more about grade.
Okay. I, I thought I heard a part about...
Soil, more than anything, I want to make sure the soil, soil state gets there.
True. So in terms of your understanding of the, the typical site plan, you would have had to have assessed approximately how much concrete might be on the site to be removed as part of your review, is that right?
Yes.
And is it, your understanding that typically the concrete that's used on these is just to pour the, the equipment pads for, like, for example, the inverters and the transformers?
Correct.
And typically, those pads are maybe the size of a parking space, or maybe up to two parking spaces in size, as an approximation?
Approximation, yes.
And then, i- if they're built pursuant to code, then they would be approximately, what, eight to 10 inches in terms of depth?
Correct.
And a portion of that would be above grade, and then a portion of that would be below grade, is that correct? So really, there would only be the removal of maybe half of that, so four to five inches of soil pushed around that area in order to pour the concrete, is that correct?
For just the BSS, yes. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, oh, sorry. For just the BSS area, as well as the transformers and the inverters, yes.
And when you say best, because we've got a new court reporter this evening, we're talking about battery energy storage systems, so that's BSS?
Yes.
Okay. And so when that soil gets disturbed for purposes of pouring those smaller concrete foundations, is it then redistributed in the immediate area around that, that concrete pouring?
Typically, yes.
And so then, once the concrete is removed, they can regrade that same soil back in to level the area where the concrete is removed, is that correct?
That is correct.
And is it your understanding that's the similar process for the roads, that they'll take and grade out an area, but that soil is put to the side as long as they, you know, can structure it in a way that it won't change the flow of drainage, is that right?
That is correct.
So then after the rock is removed from these aggregate roads, then they would regrade the soil, meanwhile, it stays on the property the entire time, is that correct?
That is correct.
Right. In terms of burying utilities, there are certain requirements under either the National Electric Code, or other building permit codes, or under the AMA, as to depths in which things can be buried, is that right?
That is correct.
And for purposes of the AMA, if anything is buried below five feet, then the, if the landowner, if the landowner chooses to, the landowner can say that that can stay, and that the operator can leave that there, is that correct?
That is correct.
But if it's above five feet underneath the grade, then it has to be removed?
Yes.
Okay. In this particular scenario, is it your understanding that the BSS area is under a purchase-option agreement such that if the project is to be approved, IP power would be purchasing the land upon which the BSS is going to be built?
That is my understanding, yes.
So in that scenario, when it comes time for decommissioning, it would be the company that would be the landowner that would determine how they wanted to handle that in terms of whether they wanted to leave gravel access drives or gravel areas on the property or not. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. All right, I think I got it now. Thank you.
Okay, sure. Thank you, Mr. Uphoff. I just want to be clear that we get an answer to Mr. Wright's question. The 12-month clock starts ticking when the first part of deconstruction in the decommissioning plan takes place, is that right?
The, the language of the AMA is not quite that specific. That's, I would interpret it similarly, but another interpretation, which would give an even shorter time period, is that it would indicate it's from the end of the useful life of the project, so if it were to stop producing power for a period of time and be determined to no longer be useful, then that could trigger the beginning of that 12-month period as well.
So are you saying that an Illinois Department of Agriculture regulation is unclear?
Every once in a blue moon, the Illinois State Government doesn't always make it perfectly clear.
I always preface many of my comments about what goes on in my hometown, Springfield, with the Illinois Legislature in its infinite wisdom. Tongue planted firmly in cheek. Okay. Mr. Wright, that's kind of the answer. It's up to the Illinois...
That's kind of the answer, that's kind of the answer. Very vague.
The Illinois Department of Agriculture and the Agricultural Impact Mitigation Agreement doesn't actually give a start time when the clock starts running. Mr. Kite, you look like you have something to say.
I, I just have two more questions.
Okay.
I thought you were coming back to me, but then...
I'm, I'm going to come back to you in just a second. Okay, so that's, Mr. Wright, that's the best we can do based upon what we've been given by the Department of Agriculture. Mr. Kite, I was going to ask you, do you want the engineering plans signed and sealed?
That's not for me to decide.
Okay.
The, the statute talks to that. But why don't we come back to that? I'll confirm with Mr. Uphoff about it when we're on a break.
Yeah, because I want to know what issues we have and what, what the resolution might be. You guys going to work that out on a break?
We'll try to.
Okay. And the drainage tiles issue, are you satisfied with the questions and responses that Ms. Rowley questioned Mr. Uphoff presented and Ms. Rowley answered?
Not sure how to answer that question if you're asking me.
Is it failed?
It's a question whether it's there or not there, and that's the only issue. It, it's not up to me to decide whether it, it's just a state law issue.
Work that one out too, please, if you can. Do you have any other questions for the witness, Mr. Kite?
Very quickly. In referencing back to the Agricultural Impact Mitigation Agreement, you, you agree with me, right, that the deconstruction plan is required at this point in time? Fair?
Yes, a deconstruction plan is required.
And the paragraph, Mr. Uphoff, the sentence he read to you says, states, "Prior to construction, the facility owner shall work with the landowner to identify drainage tiles traversing the property subject to the underlying agreement to be, to the extent reasonably practical." Practicable, fair?
Yep.
Now, "All drainage tiles, tile lines identified in this manner shall be shown on the construction and deconstruction plans." Is that fair?
That is fair.
I read that correctly?
Yes.
And is there anything that would have prevented you or the developer in this instance from doing a drain tile survey prior to this time?
Other than standard industry practice being to wait?
Okay, but in terms of the par, the sentence here, it states, "All drainage tiles identified in this manner shall be shown on the construction and deconstruction plans." Is it, my question is, is there anything preventing the developer or someone else from reporting a drain tile survey prior to this submission?
I think we know.
And is there anything in the engineer-stamped version, excuse me, in exhibit E so far that shows the drain tile?
No.
Is there anywhere in the Illinois Professional Engineering Practices Act that accepts out preliminary plans?
Without being stamped, yes.
In what is, where, what provision within the Illinois Professional Practices Act are you referring to?
I have to look, I don't know.
Okay. In terms of the other items that we talked about, original construction costs for the facility, weed control, those items have not been provided for at this time. Is that fair?
Not at this time, no.
Okay. That's all the questions I have for you.
Recross, Mr. Uphoff.
No. Or Mr. Keynes, excuse me.
Call me whatever you want, Mr. Uphoff. Technically not, Your Honor, I just get to sit in his chair.
Understood.
And Mr. Barnum and I are going to remember to turn the judge's monitor back so I don't get in trouble and held in contempt of the court that I'm in. All right, final questions for this witness come from members of the county board. Folks? Mr. Barnum?
The construction and deconstruction plans, as the address of the weed ordinance, all that will be...
Not as far as the building permit.
Prior, it won't be the day we apply for it. I mean, we'll have plenty of time to review it.
Yes, the building permit plans are...
Pardon?
Yes, there is time to review.
I didn't mean to...
Yes, there is time to review the building permit plans.
And that, okay, all right, yeah.
All right, thank you, Mr. Barnum. Anybody else? Chairman?
And the tile survey and plans, will that be done prior to the building permit review?
Yes.
Mr. Patrick, did you have anything?
So I'm to understand that that will be before the building permit. Is that correct?
That's correct. Because they, they normally do it at the time of building permit to try and avoid hitting them, right? You want to know where they are so that you can design around them as much as possible.
I think we want to ensure that all due carefulness has been, been taken place so that damage is minimized, and, and any problems or critical areas have been identified so we know that everybody's being taken care of correctly.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Anything else from members of the county board?
May, oh, sir, may, I was going to ask if I could ask a couple of follow-ups based on the board's questions?
Yes, you, you may.
Okay. In relation to the, the drain tile survey, but that's typically what it's referred to when you often try to identify where all the drain tiles are, is that right? And is that, number one, not that you would know the details of that, but in your experience, having reviewed these or spoken with developers on these projects, is that typically also included as a provision of the lease agreement?
Or the special use permit, yes.
So either it could be part of the lease agreement or a special condition for a special use permit, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And in, are you familiar with approximately the, the costs that are involved with trying to identify drain tiles on projects, especially of this size and scope?
I mean, 30 acres alone is typically 20,000 to 25,000.
Okay. So then if you multiply that up to, to 2,000, approximately 2,000 acres?
It goes hefty, yes.
Okay. So there would be a significant cost upfront in terms of trying to identify all of those in, at this stage, not even sure that a permit would be issued, is that correct?
That is correct.
But if a permit were to be issued, and then before a building permit could be received, all of that work would ultimately have to be done, is that correct?
Correct, once a viable project is reached.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Once a viable project is reached, that's...
Viable project, okay. Thank you, Ms. Rowley. Okay, Mr. Chair, oh, Mr. Barnum?
The state's attorney, can he ask a question?
Sure. Mr. Dobelstein can do whatever he wants, this is his county.
Okay. He's got a question.
Mr. Uphoff, are you done?
Sure, yes.
And you said that the best property is subject to a purchase option, where they, they become the...
That'd be a better question for Ian, in terms of that understanding of that, but yes.
Is the entire solar farm subject to a purchase option where they would in that become the landowners?
I am not aware of that.
We can answer if you want on that. So just the BSS area is subject to a purchase option agreement, the remainder of it is subject to a lease?
Thank you, Mr. Dobelstein. Gentlemen in the back, did you have a question? Could you please, could you please state your name?
Yeah, Mike Magger.
Mike Magger, M-A-G-E-R.
The current landowner. We have, all the tile has been GPS located, because we've installed most every bit of it on the ground, so we have not, they, we have, I've given a rough map of it, but it's all GPS located, and where we ran in the neighbor's tile, and that's all been located, and so, I, I mean, I think the tile part of it is a, is a, really an easy locate, because we've got locate, so, except for one that's been there for 50 years and the other thing.
Thank you for clarifying that for us.
Yes, yes.
Really appreciate that, Mr. Magger. All right, Ms. Rowley, have you had enough of us? You may step down. Thank you. Mr. Uphoff, will you and Mr. Kite get together during a recess and hammer out this stuff?
Sure.
And otherwise, you know, I'm going to have to ask Mr. Kite if he thinks the applic...
We're planning on it.
Okay. We had to know if we're going to go on. Okay? All right.
Mr. Keynes, I'm going to return Mr. Kite's exhibits back to him.
Thank you, Ms. Connor.
I have the exhibit G that I gave you back in this binder.
Got to make sure we have the right exhibit Gs and the right binders.
I, I don't want to accidentally take Mr. Kite's notes.
Thank you, Ms. Connor. All right, you may call your next witness, Mr. Uphoff.
At this time, we would call Mark Pomigaz.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give shall...
be true?
I do.
Very good, thank you. Could you state your name, spelling your first and last names for the record?
My name is Mark Pomikaz, M-A-R-K-P-O-M-Y-K-A-C-Z.
Pomikaz, okay, very good. All right, Mr. Uphoff, you may examine your witness.
Thank you, Mr. Pomikaz. Let's start with just a little bit of background. So you've spelled your name for us, but could you please tell us a little bit about your background and history as it relates to your current profession?
Sure. I've been an appraiser for 39 years. My specialty is utilities, power plants, energy assets. I am an MAI, Member of the Appraisal Institute, which is a commercial real estate appraisal designation. I'm also an ASA, Accredited Senior Appraiser as a Business Appraiser, and I am licensed as a, certified as a Commercial Real Estate Appraiser in about 28 states, including Illinois.
And how many times have you testified in a hearing similar to this involving determinations of potential impact on property values from a utility-type project?
Solar in particular, about a half dozen times.
And in more broadly than maybe just solar?
Yeah, well, other than solar, maybe a dozen other projects, damages were the main topic.
And as it relates to testifying in Illinois, have you previously testified in the state?
I have.
And in what types of hearings?
They were county board hearings as well as state court.
Mr. Kites, then with that background, I would ask that Mr. Pomikaz be certified as an expert in real estate appraisal, in particular as it relates to utility projects.
Mr. Pomikaz, have you done property evaluation studies previously in the state of Illinois with respect to utilities?
Studies in a sense of appraisals, yes, many times.
Mr. Kite, do you have any questions for this witness?
No questions.
Do you have any objection to him serving as an expert witness with respect to appraisals and evaluations?
I have a question, actually. Take that back.
Okay, go right ahead.
How many appraisals have you done in relation to a battery storage system?
Two that I can think of, only because they were completed relatively recently, the last couple of weeks. It's a new technology, it's already been around a few years.
Have there been any in relation that you've, you've looked at matched period analysis in relation to an existing battery storage facility?
No, this will be the first.
Have you ever done a analysis of a property value that is either adjacent to or immediately nearby a battery storage facility?
Have I, just to make sure I'm clear on the question, have I appraised a property that was nearby or adjacent to an energy storage facility? No, I don't think I have.
Are you aware of any studies?
Other than this one here.
Okay. This one here being one that hasn't been built yet, right?
Yes.
But in terms of one that's already been constructed, have you done any analysis of the property value after the construction of a battery energy storage facility?
Have not.
Is there any study showing property value in relation to adjacent properties to an existing battery storage facility?
Is there, are there any studies? Is that what you're asking?
Yes, sir.
I don't think there are. I did not see them. We had to complete our own study.
In relation to battery storage, you mean?
Yes.
Mr. Kite?
I don't have any more questions. I don't necessarily have an objection to him testifying, I guess it's a question of how far on the battery storage part.
All right. The determination that I have to make with respect to is someone considered an expert witness in their field or not, really goes to how long they have to testify. Mr. Pomikaz, where, Pomikaz, I'm sorry, where do you live?
I live in New Jersey.
He lives in New Jersey, so he's not from Edgar County, okay? So he either gets as an out-of-county witness either three minutes if I find he's not an expert witness, or he gets 30 minutes if I do find he's an expert witness. That's the only real distinction here. Do I give him 30 minutes or do I give the gentleman who came clear from New Jersey, do I give him just three minutes? I think, and I'm going to guess, Mr. Kite, that your client wants to hear what his thoughts are on property valuation, the assessment of this, so I'm going to give him 30 minutes of direct testimony excluding cross-examination questions from the county board and the attorneys, not simply because he came halfway across the country to Edgar County, but I think because we want to know, Mr. Farnham is nodding his head, yes, we want to know what he has to say about whether property values will be impacted, in his opinion. So with respect to an expert opinion, I'm just going to say this, folks in the room who are lawyers know what an expert witness says and does, folks who aren't lawyers have the blessing of knowing, not knowing, but when an expert witness gives an opinion, that is that expert witness's educated and concerted opinion, in his professional opinion, about whether something is true or not. The finder of fact, in this case, in some cases, it's a jury. In cases that Mr. Dobelstein prosecutes, a jury decides whether and how much credibility goes to an expert witness's opinion. In this case, the finder of fact are these four folks down here on the Edgar County Board. So you folks can listen to his opinion and take it for what you think it's worth, but I'm going to find that Mr. Pomikaz is an expert witness. With all that said, I'm sorry for being long-winded, but they pay lawyers by the word, you know? So I'm going to find him to be an expert witness and he'll have 30 minutes to testify. Go right ahead, Mr. Uphoff.
Thank you, sir. So, Mr. Pomikaz, in general, can you help walk us through how you would typically go about conducting, and I'm, sorry, let me back off one step. In this scenario, were you asked to evaluate this particular project and how it may impact the property values of adjoining or adjacent or nearby properties?
That was my assignment.
And so, did you end up preparing a report for that purpose?
I did.
And do you have a copy of it up there?
I do.
Okay. And so I'm holding up this stack and on the front it says Kirkland's Appraisals LLC, is that correct?
Yes.
And is this, is that a copy of the report that you prepared for this particular project?
It is.
And on the second page, do you have a signature there along with a Richard Kirkland?
I do.
And, I'm sorry, I lost track of the numbers that were at, Your Honor, but, Mr. Kites, but I would ask that this be admitted as applicant's exhibit.
Mr. Kite, do you know where we are on numbering exhibits?
I bet Brian does.
Mr. Tuck, you get to say something.
Exhibit three.
This is exhibit three. Folks, this is Mr. Brian Tuck, he is Mr. Kite's paralegal, and without him, the show doesn't roll.
Mr. Tuck's attorney, more like.
Don't flatter yourself, Mr. Kite. Mr. Tuck, thank you. Exhibit three.
All right, so, Mr. Pomikaz, then you were asked to create a report, we have a report here, but can you tell us just sort of high level how it is that you go about pulling together and preparing a report such as this?
Sure. Appraisal has a procedure, it has procedures, it has methodologies. It usually begins with what we call scoping exercise. You examine the issues at hand, what the client needs, how they intend to use the report, and that drives your scope of work. How much research is done, how it's reported, et cetera. Then you get into researching the property itself, you research the market itself, then you'll get into issues of analysis and drawing conclusions, and then finally you'll report that in either a oral report or a written report.
So in this circumstance, when you were, and I guess I should also ask this, just to be clear, it's listed under Kirkland Appraisals and there's Richard Kirkland who also signed off on this report, did you and he work together in creating this report?
Yes.
And have you and Mr. Kirkland worked together before?
Yes, we have.
Okay. And so you talked about the basics of how you go about pulling together these projects generally. In this particular circumstance, can you walk us through just a few steps that you took that were specific to this project and what it was that you began looking at?
Sure. After discussing the issue with client, the issue being what the client needs, what kind of report they needed, we conducted what's known as a used-to-have appraisal that estimates, examines the issue of whether there's a damage to the adjacent properties. What that entailed was researching appraisal procedures, theory, methodologies for estimating damages, if they exist. And that included examining various texts, reference materials, white papers, government publications, and then looking for data, for market, market data. We searched quite extensively. This is probably, of the damages estimates that I worked on, this is probably the most extensive amount of data that I've ever reported. It goes into an analysis, ultimately what's known as a paired sales or a matched sales analysis, and from there we're able to determine whether this kind of development has an impact on the adjacent properties.
In general, what are some of the things that you're typically looking for that can have an impact on adjacent property values?
Yes, some, some properties impact the adjacent properties. There's a short list in the report, let me see if I can find it really quickly. And they, they include obvious things, which most of us might recognize right away. Do, does a property impact adjacent properties due to traffic or odor, norries, environmental issues, air, water, soil pollution, whether there's going to be any sort of stigma associated with the property that's being developed, and then of course there's appearance and view share issues.
And so then you indicated that you pulled together and looked at a lot of data, I think you listed other government studies or peer-reviewed studies, is that correct?
Yes. This is an unusual appraisal assignment, estimating damages to adjacent property. So we'll look to white papers, academic papers, peer-reviewed articles, as well as government papers to see how other appraisers, because appraisal practice works is, I'm supposed to do what my peers would do in a similar circumstance. So we did a lot of research to determine what my peers would do and had done in this circumstance.
And so ultimately then the methodology that you put together, do you believe is akin to the, what your peers would do in a circumstance like this?
I believe it is, yes.
So then when you started going through and looking at the data as it relates to this particular project and the scope of this particular project, what in particular were some of the things that you were looking at? And one of the, the reason I'm asking this question is you indicated before that you've done work on solar projects before, but that battery energy storage systems, BES systems, are newer. So how is it that you pulled together data or how is it that you approached your methodology in relation to that aspect of this?
There, there is a sort of cliche that you teach beginner appraisers, freshman appraisers, is that every piece of property is unique, so it's, you're never going to find a perfect match. So we have BES facilities, there are new technology. We don't have white papers yet on that. We don't have government reporting on national databases yet because it's a new technology. That's okay, appraisers are used to this issue where we deal with unique properties, every property is a little bit unique in some way. What appraisers do is they'll find a best analogous situation and apply the same theories and concepts to the new problem, whatever it is, in this case, a BES technology.
And so did you believe that you were able to find some other instances that were comparable or would allow you to make a determination for this case?
Yes, I did, yes.
Any, any, can you give us any examples of other types of properties they looked at that allowed you to do that?
Well, I have estimated damages on things such as cell towers, chromium contamination, as well as solar plants, coal plants, proposed coal plants years ago, drug rehab facilities, halfway houses. You learn after a while to look for the things that may have an impact on adjacent properties, even properties that have had a heinous crime like a murder in them, have a stigma. You consider these issues and you start to identify concepts that impact, and we talked about those a minute ago, things like traffic or noise or pollution or stigma. And so you find the items that this particular project, the BES or standards of solar voltaic, would have, what kind of impacts might they have on adjacent properties?
So let's start then with the solar side of it. Going through, and I know that you have a lot of information and data here in your report, and so I know we can't go through all of it, but if you were going to give us a high-level overview of your report and your findings as it relates to the solar side, could you please walk us through those?
Sure. There, turns out there were several methodologies that we could employ, and we were able, I should go employ several of them. So let me just run through the different, the different approaches that you came to determining whether there's an impact from solar. One of them is a review of what other appraisers are doing and what other analysts have done. And there's, there's probably at least a half dozen other reports on what other appraisers have done in similar situations. And we have examined their reports to determine what the market and how my industry is behaving towards this question. The next thing is looking at articles, peer-reviewed articles by independent parties who are looking to determine whether there's an impact from solar. We did that as well. And then in there, there's a, there's a subcategory of university of government reports, which we have looked at and read those and have analyzed those and determined how they might inform us here on these issues. And then we looked at a survey method, we looked at, we surveyed assessors to determine what assessors are doing when they reassess properties that are next to the solar installation. Are they reducing the value of those properties for property tax assessment purposes? We did a survey method. Then we also looked at actual projects where there are solar farms, and we looked at the values of properties before and after these solar projects. This is the classic appraisal paired sales or matched sales analysis. That is one of the leading techniques that you can employ, and we did that, we did employ that here.
And so just to hone in on that particular methodology just a little bit, so if I understood what you were just saying is you're analyzing sales of properties, pardon me, that are near or adjacent to the project and then comparing them or matching them against other sales, is that correct?
Yes, either sales prior to the installation of the solar project at that location, or we're comparing the sales that happened at the same time, but at a different location, similar location, but away from the solar installation.
So trying to find two properties that standing alone themselves would be fairly similar, one being then closer to a solar project than the other, and looking at the sales of those properties to see how they match up, is that correct?
Yes. The basic theory is that in a paired sales is you want to find two sales, hopefully if they're identical in all aspects except for the one that you want to measure, whatever that is. Maybe you're measuring the benefit of an extra bathroom or, you know, an extra bedroom. So you'll find houses that are the same in all other respects except for that one bathroom or that one bedroom, and see what the difference is in value. Here, what we're doing is we're measuring a location next to solar installation. So we're looking for homes that are identical, now they're never perfectly identical, but that's a problem we always deal with in appraisal, and you make adjustments for those differences when they're, when they're slightly different.
So then, did you have an opportunity to find some paired sales that allowed you to develop an opinion as to the potential impact a project such as this may have?
I did, yes.
All right. And without going through all those examples, can you, again, just sort of give us the high line on what those paired sales demonstrated to you?
The basic bottom line is, I did not see an impact. We saw no impact based on the data that we found. The data tends to be about zero, there's some that are slightly positive, and there's some that are negative, an impact is negative. There are, the differences are so small that we consider them immaterial and not significant. I can't say in terms of statistically significant because appraisal isn't statistics, but in terms... terms of appraisal adjustments, these ranges are so small and tend so clearly around zero. The conclusion is that there is no impact from solar installations.
And based on your review of the other academic studies and peer reviewed studies, do you believe that your findings in this instance are on par with the other reports that you've seen?
Yes, they are. They all indicate about the same thing, that they're tending to be either a negligible impact, positive or negative, but tending to be about zero.
And would it be fair to say that there's been, you indicated a lot of data, is that because we've had solar farms existing for a long enough period of time that there's been enough sales and repeat sales and things like that that you've been able to accumulate a sufficient amount of data to be confident in these determinations?
Yes, real estate data is very slow moving. It takes three months to close a sale, so even the best data is three months old. Solar installations at this scale are really new in the last 15 years. I did one of the first ones in New Jersey, in my area. The first one I did, it was one of the most difficult things I had to do, is to find the data necessary for that analysis. Now, they did another one about two years later, and in that time, a lot more data was available, now we had the first one. And the same thing has happened here. That first one I did was around 2010. So the second one I did was 2013-ish. It was a big change in the amount of data that quickly. So yeah, there's a lot more data now.
And would it be fair to say that the more data you have, the more the numbers start to crystallize or trends start to become more apparent?
Yes, and the concerns that people have become more clear. For example, there's always the question of stigma. And properties that are new, property uses that are new, come with concerns. Solar was newer 15, 20 years ago. And so now it becomes more and more clear as we see more and more data that there is no impact. In the beginning, people were really concerned. Some people weren't concerned, they never were, but some people were.
So then in relation to the, you indicated that there was a survey done and spoke with assessors. Were you finding anything different from assessors who were evaluating these types of projects?
Their opinions are the same as mine. They're not, they're not making an adjustment to homes when they're reassessing because this home is now next to a solar array which they think is less, makes it less valuable.
You said they think it makes less valuable or they're finding that...
They are not, they are not making an adjustment for that idea.
Okay, so they're not adjusting to that degree?
Yes.
Meaning they do not think that it has a negative impact on the value?
Yes, that's clear, yes.
Okay. So then let's transition a little bit to the BES. Now, you indicated that this is a newer technology, so there's not as much data out there. So you tried to find other areas or considerations to take into account. You listed some of those things before, noise being one of them, maybe light pollution or dust pollution or things like that. So taking some of those factors into consideration, did you evaluate the BES system here?
I did.
And did you learn that the nearest non-participating residence to the BES is approximately 1,300 feet or approximately a quarter of a mile away?
I did. That's a specific thing that I will research in these projects.
And what if any conclusion did you draw in relation to how the BES may impact those most nearest non-participating residences?
We can run through the list. Noise, 1,300 feet is quite a distance for any kind of noise. Now, there are some properties and some uses, I did a rock crushing facility that was extremely noisy and also dusty, and 1,300 feet wouldn't have been enough for that property. But this kind of technology does not generate issues for noise and dust, air pollution, light pollution, water pollution, under normal operations, that's not something that's going to happen here. They are, really, the only issue that comes up is, there's no traffic, I can say that. Really, the only issue is a view shed issue. And these tend to be very small or low profile properties. Solar panels are very short, under 12 feet, as I recall. I believe also the BES is going to be also under that. The substation will be taller, but it's relatively small compared to the balance of the site. So yeah, I went through the whole list and found that there were analogous situations elsewhere to allow me to include this BES facility. Things like these distances and the way it's going to be designed with buffers would also not have an impact on adjacent properties.
And so you mentioned the buffers there, you referring to sort of vegetative screening that is going to surround the project area?
Yes. Best practices have evolved over the last 20 years, and one of them is that vegetative screenings are installed at key points around solar projects. I understand that will be part of this project, which again goes to mitigate any concern for the one issue that solar and BES facilities might cause, which is a view shed issue.
So view shed, again, you're talking mostly about the subjective view of a non-participating property that's nearby, is that right?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. And so there are some mitigations that are being put in place here in terms of the vegetative screening, right?
Yes.
And then in addition to that, you also noted the generally low profile of the project as a whole, is that correct?
Yes. Any normal home, even a single family home is twice as high. Commercial buildings are often twice as high as that. Industrial buildings are often multiples higher than that.
So as it relates to the BES, then you indicated your opinion as to the solar facility, but as to the BES portion of the facility, what is your opinion as it relates to that?
Again, I do not see any basis to conclude that there's going to be an impact on the adjacent properties.
No further questions.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Appoff. Thank you for your testimony, Mr. Palmikas. Now it's time for questions. First, members of the Edgar County Board, Ms. Ellis.
Yes, I find it very unfortunate that we had no opportunity to study this 172 pages before we were expected to ask questions. I find that really inexcusable. My question is regarding Edgar County. It's a lot of nice words and pictures, but what I want to know is Edgar County. We talk about appraisals, but what about sales? In this case, we happen to have the perfect example of a non-participating landowner who purchased their home not long ago and prices have not gone down. So what are you going to do if this non-participating landowner with the home decides in five years to sell their home and they can't get it sold for a reasonable amount of money? Because we can tell by the rest of the county that prices are not going down. What's their recourse? You can have all these words and say all these studies on appraisals, but sale is what matters. What are you going to do about it?
Obviously, that's not a question Mr. Palmikas can ask, can answer.
Let's try to ask, I guess, a question to the witness in relation to that question to maybe try to provide some clarity?
Let's try, let's try to answer this question, but go ahead, Mr. Appoff.
Sure. Mr. Palmikas, there was a question asked about appraisals. You're an appraiser, but when you were talking about match paired sales, you were analyzing actual sales data, correct?
From Illinois, yes.
So it wasn't that you were just looking at appraisals and looking what other people have appraised properties to be and indicating that you don't think there will be a diminution in value. You're actually looking at actual sales that have occurred, either before the solar facility was built as compared to after, or properties that were near the solar facility versus properties that were further away that were as best as possible identical, is that correct?
Yes, I looked at those actual types of sales. That's an appraisal technique known as a paired sales analysis. And we've done this all over the country, but in particular in this appraisal because it's on Illinois, I did in Illinois. So I think we're addressing the issue. And it is Illinois and values are different here, but the question is, is how much the values might change relative to one another. So the values may be higher here in Edgar County versus over the border in Indiana, just because it's a different state, but the economics, the theory is that whatever that difference is, it would be relative to each other. So the economic theories ought to apply everywhere.
So you're not just, and again, I just want to be clear, you're not comparing appraisals to appraisals, you're comparing sales to sales?
Oh, we did both, actually, yes. In the paired sales analysis, I looked at sales of Illinois homes with and without the issue of solar. And then I also looked at what other appraisers are doing, what white studies said and government reports said.
Okay.
I think Ms. Ellis's question is still out there. What can be done in the event the Heltons can't sell their house in five years? Is that basically your question?
Mr. Palmikas, in a scenario where, let's say we have this facility that gets built and five years down the road, somebody nearby wants to sell their property and they believe they're having an issue selling it either at all, or I suppose the question may also be for the value that they believe it is worth. First of all, you're indicating that all the studies and data that you reviewed show that that hasn't been occurring, correct?
That's correct.
But that aside, would there be any way of attributing it specifically to the solar facility?
In the future? I think yes, you could if there really was a damage, if some damage emanating from that property. People's properties get damaged by their neighbors all the time, unfortunately, they have legal processes to work that out? Is that what you're asking about?
Yeah, so is there, you know, methods to try to determine what the cause of their inability to sell that, sell that property may be?
Yes, I mean, I've done damages estimates where one person sewer flooded an adjacent property, sewer an office building and destroyed everything inside. So yes, and I was working for the person whose office building was contaminated and damaged, and we could tell where the issue was coming from and we had to talk about the dollar amount.
And so in those instances, there's an opportunity for those homeowners to pursue legal recourse if there is in fact actual damage to their property?
Yes, there are, yes.
All right. Any other questions from members of the county board? Questions from members of units of local government, including school districts? Questions from interested parties, folks who live in Edgar County? Yes, sir. You live in Edgar County, sir?
Yes, I do, Philip Fox.
Philip Fox?
That's one L. I've got a question for you. How many days did you spend on site studying this site?
One afternoon.
One afternoon? Is that normal for a project this size?
Yes. Especially one this size. So much of what we do now is on the computer. Google Maps, for example, tells me much more than I can actually see from the street. I also have access to engineer reports, other professional reports, as well as lots of public documents. An inspection for a commercial or a utility type property is not a requirement for appraisal. It sometimes helps, especially if you have trouble gathering data, but I did not have that issue here.
So would you buy a house without not looking at it?
Well, as I was saying, if I can get all the information that I need without looking at it, I wouldn't have a problem. But it's often more efficient when it comes to single family homes to just gather it yourself by looking at it.
And then the other question I got, you said, is this your first battery project that you're involved with?
I can think of two that I've done. Well, actually now, I'm standing here, I think of the third, might have been one of the first generation done, and that was only five years ago or so. So this is the first one I'm doing a damages estimate on.
So you're, you're the man then? Whatever you say is going to go? Nobody can tell you any different.
Mr. Keynes, I don't think that's a question.
Well, I think it could be phrased as a question. So I think he's, he's asking, are you the man because you're the first one to do this?
Yeah. Kirkland appraisal and the team that I'm working with are probably some of the few appraisers in the country doing this kind of work. I don't know of another group doing it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Fox. Any other questions for members of the public? Mr. Wright?
I hope you don't get tired of the asking.
No, sir. This is a, this is a public hearing and you're a member...
Once again, I'm Phil Wright.
You're a member of the public.
Property owner in Edgar County. I personally had experience of an entity coming in and building a site on my properties and it was devalued. Now, it's a solar farm, I understand that. So I'm not talking appraisal property or appraisal dollars, I'm talking about selling property in central Illinois. And if you don't think these folks' house is going to be impacted by a battery storage facility that no one really knows a whole lot about, I think that's crazy. And I respect your opinion, I hope you respect mine.
Mr. Wright, you need to ask him a question.
Okay.
You can testify later.
Would you buy their house in three years after this battery storage thing? Or would it be discounted?
I do not believe it would be discounted. Personal response, I would buy it today. I particularly am not troubled at all by solar or electric battery storage.
My response to you is I think you're wrong. I've lived here for 70 years.
Mr. Keynes.
Mr. Wright? I'm sorry, this is the time to ask questions. You'll have a half hour later on where you can say whatever you want to say, just how the process goes. Any other questions for Mr. Palmikas, from members of the public who are from Edgar County or own ground in Edgar County? All right, questions from folks from outside the county? Edgar County staff and consultants, questions for this witness from you, Mr. Kite?
Yeah, I have a couple. Sir, the date on your report is, is October 15th of 2025?
Yes.
Was there, is that, is this the final report, I assume, that you prepared?
Yes.
Is there any prior drafts of this report?
There were multiple drafts circulated between me, Rich, and the other appraisers on the team. It was also common, although I don't know if it happened in this case, because this litigation will often circulate a what we call a final draft with legal counsel, but I don't know if that was done in this case.
Well, I wouldn't say this is litigation, it's just a public hearing, but in terms...
I'm not a lawyer, but for me, this feels like litigation.
Yeah, I got you. In terms though of, in this particular instance, it sounds like you're not aware if there was a preliminary draft circulated to the developers, that I'm hearing from you?
Yes.
If there was a preliminary draft circulated to the developer, who would have done that?
Rich, Mr. Kirkland.
And then I assume Rich Kirkland is the Kirkland of Kirkland Appraisals?
He is.
And is Mr. Kirkland here?
He is not.
In terms of the process, which you indicated there would be some, somebody could have some sort of legal process to bring a claim if their property was devalued, what is that legal process in Illinois?
Again, I'm not a lawyer, but it's, it seems to me people sue about all kinds of things. Certainly, if you are hurt or damaged in some way, that seems to be a basic, basic function of the legal system, is to find justice.
But you indicated when Mr. Appoff asked you the question of whether or not there was a legal process, you indicated there was, and I'm asking, what is that specific legal process? And if you don't know the answer, that's okay. But you indicated you do know that there's a legal process, what is it?
Yes, as an appraiser, I need to know certain elements of the legal processes. I have participated in damages proceedings where my appraisals were used in those damaged proceedings. And again, I'm not up short of all the procedures in Illinois. I don't think I've done any damages estimates or damages cases in Illinois, but I have done in elsewhere, I'm assuming they're analogous.
Okay, you're not an expert in Illinois law, fair?
I'm not a lawyer. However, I have done a number of, I've testified a number of times in Illinois.
I'm not trying to make this difficult. Are you an expert in Illinois law, yes or no?
I don't think I can say I'm an expert in law unless I'm a lawyer. And I told you I'm not a lawyer.
All right. In terms of what you've indicated in your report, which we just received this evening, in terms of what you've indicated in your report, what you're testifying to is that there won't be, in your opinion, any diminution in property value for any adjacent properties. Is my understanding that?
Yes.
How confident are you in that opinion?
Well, I've never been asked to rate confidence. As I've said before, I don't think, I know I have never seen this much analysis and research in the damages estimate. That gives me a great deal of confidence that we have done all the research that could possibly be imagined. And the data is uniformly indicating no impact on value. So I guess I would say I'm very confident if I had to rate my confidence.
Because part of it is we're in a special use hearing, and the board is making decisions based on, in part, the report that you've provided.
Understood.
And so my question, I guess, is if you scale of one to 10, 10 being the most confident, how confident are you in your report?
I don't know, I can answer that.
Mr. Kite, he's already said he's very confident in his-
Fair enough, I'll move on. Are you confident enough that you would provide a property value guarantee to the homes?
I'm going to object, he's not in a position to be able to offer a property value guarantee, nor can be required under the law.
It's a statement.
In terms of when this report was finalized, when was it finalized?
October 15th.
And so that's when it was provided to the applicant?
I would imagine within the close of that day or early the next morning.
Okay, so did you provide it to the applicant?
I did not send it, no, I did not transmit it. Rich did that.
Who did the final report? Who was, who did that?
Well, when you say the final report, I understand that I certified this report as a Illinois certified appraiser, so I assume full responsibility for what's in it. I did a review several days prior to the 15th, my final review. Rich did another grammar spelling type review, and then sent it out. So he did the last typing, it was done. But as far as the content of the report, the opinions in the report, I did a final review.
Have you ever testified on behalf of someone who claimed that their property had been diminished in value?
Yes.
In Illinois?
Uh, no.
Other questions?
All right, very good, thank you, Mr. Kite. Redirect examination now, Mr. Uphoff.
Sure. Not to belabor the point, but you were comparing actual sales that had occurred here in Illinois when you were doing at least part of the methodology contained in your report, right?
One of the methodologies, yes.
Okay, so you did a couple of methodologies, but one of them was comparing actual sales. So that wasn't just comparing estimates or appraisals from other appraisers. You did some of that as well, right? But you compared actual sales in Illinois, some that were near solar projects, some that weren't, and compared them to determine whether or not there was a difference in sale price, is that right?
Exactly.
Did that analysis also consider other factors like time on market and things like that?
Yes.
Right, so when you're giving your opinion on those topics, it's not, it's not a best guess. These are actual sales that you have tracked and monitored. That portion of it at least is hard data, is that correct?
It is, yes.
All right. And you indicated that you did your final review shortly, you're not sure if it was a day or two days, but very shortly before this was then transmitted, is that your understanding?
Yes.
Okay. You were asked some questions then about your, you know, your level of confidence as it relates to this. And also asked some questions about whether or not you've testified for others who have had their property be damaged, is that correct?
Yes.
And you indicated that you have testified, so essentially you've testified on what I would say, what I think they're trying to get to is both sides of the issue, whether a property could cause damage or whether a property has caused damage, is that correct?
Yes, to be clear, just so there's no confusion, those damages estimates were not concerning the adjacency of a solar facility. They were cell towers or a coal, proposed coal plant.
Sure.
Some other issue.
But there have been times where you've been representing the, or on, quote unquote, on the side of the homeowners who believe that their homes have been damaged, right? So you've had the professional viewpoint of sort of both sides of this issue, is that fair to say? Maybe not particularly for solar, but for the work that you do.
Yes, I have never been on the side where I thought a solar farm was damaging it, because I believe those plants that I was working on were properly designed. But I have, properties are damaged, yes, they are damaged, and I have worked in some of those cases.
And in terms of your level of competency, you obviously, in this instance, have flown across the country and put yourself under oath, subject to being cross-examined, not only by another attorney in the room and others, but the general public, is that correct?
I have.
And so you're confident enough in your opinions to put them up to that sort of scrutiny, is that correct?
I am, yes.
And you just indicated that, you know, there have been instances where you've had, you've found other sites and indicated that you believe they were properly cited. So let me come back to that. In reviewing this particular site plan, what, if any determinations, in your opinion, did you reach in relation to that?
The distances to the adjacent properties and particular homes is sufficient. It is comparable or better than the data that I've seen in my research. And the location of noisy, potentially noisy things, like the transformers, which sometimes have a buzz, are appropriately located away from homes.
Okay.
No further questions.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Uphoff. Mr. Dobelstein, I forgot to ask you if you had anything when I was having your Assistant State's Attorney, Mr. Kite, ask questions. Do you have anything?
I do not.
Okay, very good, thank you. All right, final questions for this witness come from members of the county board. Chairman Voit.
Yes, sir. I wish to ask you from October 15th, if you back up, how much time, when you were actually given this assignment and started working on it, what kind of time period did that take up till October 15th?
Well, I understand that we have been gathering this data from other projects for years now. So a lot of this data is already in our files. Now, we tailor it for each particular project, like in this one here, we talked to assessors in Illinois. We had a special effort to contact assessors. And we have some of that data already in the files, because we've been working on solar farms all over the Midwest for a number of years. But I would say it usually takes about two months to finish up one of these, hours spread over different weeks.
Thank you. Any other questions from members of the county board? All right, very good. Thank you, Mr. Pomacaz, you may step down.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming to Edgar County from someplace probably bigger. I've never been to New Jersey, but one of these days I'll get there. All right, the next question is, a couple of questions. Is your next witness Dr. Loomis?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then he'll be your last?
As of right now, if there's an opportunity for a break, we may speak to one other individual.
Yeah, we're going to take a recess, that's for sure. Okay, but then after his next witness, or perhaps two, then it's going to be time for the public to get up and say what they want to say. There's two ways you can do it. You can testify under oath, which means you stand up here and you say what you want to say. And if you're an Edgar County person, you get 30 minutes. If you're from outside the county, you get three minutes. But, and then you'll be subject to questioning from Mr. Uphoff, Mr. Kite, Mr. Dobelstein, perhaps myself, and the public. If you don't want to have to do the cross-examination route, you can always give public comment. And public comment in this public hearing is three minutes in length. So those are kind of the two ways you can go about it if you wish to say something. If you don't want to say anything, you don't have to. But we're going to try to get through all the testimony and public comment tonight. I don't know that we're going to get to a county board discussion and vote, especially in light of Ms. Ellis's concern about just receiving a 172-page report this evening on property valuation. But there are, that will be up to the county board and State's Attorney, Mr. Dobelstein, and his attorney, Mr. Kite. So we're going to take a recess. The question is, for you guys, how long do you need to talk about some of the issues in the engineering report on decommissioning?
Mr. Keynes?
Yes, Ms. Connor?
To factor into that, I had sent a couple of gentlemen, you might notice, to go do some printing so that the board does not have to share my laptop screen. So I would ask for a minimum of 15 minutes if we could, just to allow those gentlemen to return from the teleprinter.
Absolutely, absolutely, Ms. Connor. We'll do at least 15 minutes, because it'll take that long just to get out of the room and find the drinking fountain in the restroom. But these guys are here going to have to hash out some things.
If I were to make a suggestion, why don't we come back at 7:15?
7:15. All right, that sounds like a great idea. The county board is in recess until 7:15 this evening. Thank you. Phil, you are a full-service State's Attorney, buddy. Oh, awesome. Oh my gosh, you brought some extra guys, too.
Thank you. You're getting more confusion now or later?
Well, yeah.
Okay.
Up to you, but I-
Thank you. I'll face you. It could be sooner, it could be a lot later, I get it. Okay, all right.
Getting tired, sick and tired, Scott.
Sick and tired of being sick and tired? If we keep this up, I'm going to retire, you know?
Yeah.
I might just say that I've had enough, you know? All right. Yeah. Oh, I told you, I said, what's your problem?
All right, I want to hear eight minutes, eight minutes.
Awesome chips.
I came prepared this time to snack. I brought sleeves, too, it was cold last time.
It's definitely cold in here, I did my heat off.
I wonder if he's got the boiler going?
No.
He better be, because it's supposed to get out at 33 one night this room.
Chance for all?
Heard it's bad, mate.
I gotta pick everything, it's in the garden again.
Where you pass them out the water?
I put it after it's open.
You want some water, pass it out. Where's that cooking in or whatever?
Did y'all get done what you need to for the rain Kevin? There are two inches not far from here with a CTE line.
I don't have a gauge out, I've never heard how much we got all gathered, but everybody's going again today.
That's what I heard, that's hard to believe.
Well, there, you know, dry as it was, it just soaked it up that quick. There's all the water.
Well, I made sure to have a bucket.
Well, I got four chicken nuggets, ate some more. I, no, I, Colts County last year had a wind farm thing, and I watched it one night for four hours. And I think he told me they had like 15 areas over there.
Yeah.
It was just crazy.
That was the second longest it's seen, the longest with living.
Maybe it was 15 up there, someone told me maybe.
No, that was like 12, Livingston was like 27.
I said it was really long.
I did, I was there at least five times, and it kept getting bumpy. Didn't work, because I live in Wilmington, so when you have that, you're flying in from New Jersey.
Right.
Okay, I can relax. And they kept getting bumpy, and bumpy, and bumpy, and bumpy.
Oh, you're getting ready, you're the next person. Yeah, I saw you, you were here Thursday night.
Yeah.
You are now.
Yeah, lost sleep.
But yeah, this is the first period I've set.
Governor, is there a state tax expert?
No, I'm an economist. I got a rule because I-
Are you at the Louis A?
I was for 20 times here.
Excellent.
Yeah. And then I retire.
That's everybody's three-year policy. I love that. I bet. I think that's sarcasm.
The point is that she will come home with them or she's going to stay?
I have heard. I'm gonna call in to the morgue, and I saw Brad this afternoon, said.
I was driving down the road, last week I saw the red Jeep out in the field, I said, they're fresh. I might have been on the way here, but I, that's the good thing about having two people on the morgue, you can run shifts. Is looking back?
Yep.
I talked to a, a lady who was in, around the next two weeks. Yeah. And an office in first.
What was his name? I would, I would.
Are you gonna have to pick up this lap?
I'm probably, probably. By the way, you can hear it in less than two weeks. November first, you can start traveling.
Oh, you mean in the paper that?
You're gonna have to. Get peeled up so you can get, get with it.
Sometimes you can read those.
Fix them on my lawn, I'm there at Brad's house, all them marions.
Bull barn there?
No, the one.
Do you have a no-here zone? Yeah, the office is, was right in downtown, maybe, or like a block and a half from the circle. Picture of the circle, mind your circle?
The overhead view.
Yes, the overhead view, but my, my husband and I live about, it's been two to three weeks. We live north, east of the city, like, we just get to. And get to the lesbians suburbs, and then we would be right to the sticks, we'd get the. Yeah, yeah, we have, we got three acres that were bred on the bubble, I mean, we've got neighbors all around us, we're just, you know, actually, out of the country, the south side. My family's farm is about an hour east of that, so I'm actually probably central in the United States. My family, I'm, I'm very proud of. It's very much my rural home.
And there is a bathroom here and chambers.
Very much the same. Yeah.
Four or five girls in that little house.
It's not, it's.
The front room across the house, hallway across, but it's back in.
We're trying to.
All right, the elderly? Well.
He's the only ones doing it.
Eight hundred.
Yeah, the exit field. So, we're, in the last, last couple of days, we had.
We got some ground, it's west.
Not for this.
Eight hundred acres down there. Thank you for coming. But, yeah.
No issues, but the property was also directed to. So, the best was actually. Especially in positive pollution.
You're gonna go there? Yeah, yeah. Probably go find a book. Like, or the houses that are affected by agri. Already? But, yeah, that's. Yeah.
And I, I think Dr. Lewis is. The board members all have one year's copy for you and you. Although, except to air that into exhibits, but it shows two pages. I'm, I'm halfway there, I think, so. I think it's whatever the board has.
No, it ain't. Right up the corner in arts of, right, that's, and, he was like. What's, what's your first witness? You live down by Ronnie? Okay. I don't think I've ever met you before, of course.
And they were looking.
Yeah. Yeah, we've got two hundred acres.
You can afford.
I was real good friends with him, he's still, but, but in answer to your question.
No, when I saw that show here. I don't know what they're gonna do. Because of our pay, because we don't, our pay's on the. Yeah, I think it was six acres bucks. We'll put them in the state's. You want the extra miners, right?
East of.
Well, that's what, we brought twenty acres, that's what the ordinance requires, so I don't know where they're, they're gonna be stored at, but we brought twenty. I think I took up an entire storage section, all these. Yeah, we just started pulling that box in my.
Yeah, it's not, it's not small.
I don't turn it small up in the future, so I don't turn it in unless it's four hundred wells.
He'd been negotiating.
In, in Jersey.
Cause it's like.
There's so much missing.
I don't, I don't.
They had one last.
Occasionally, I don't have. Yeah, but right up. No, I mean, they, I guess if you had like a.
Then from his property, they're gonna put solar panels, they're gonna run a line across the state line, across. And then go to his, he's got property.
On the north side of.
He's got fifteen acres there.
Brian and I, Brian and I.
And that's, well, he's, and he's right underneath the power line, the big power line, and they're gonna put a substation there, some kind of substation.
The application.
New Keener, sure.
That was my, yes, fresh. Just, just like.
To do something.
Because, he's friends with Ronnie. I knew that Ronnie was pretty much. Okay, not anybody that is, actually, we call him EBA, it's.
He was sitting in a pretty good position. Cause even the Keener port is all the other two.
You played, I'm sure you played different stuff.
Well, we know Ronnie.
I didn't know where they.
Gary, you know, I don't know what, I assume they talked to him.
Well, I.
I don't know.
Well, a lot of times. I know Ronnie and Jeffrey sometimes, yeah. They're lovely.
We get the gist.
Why cover up all part of the armpit? I mean, and I really, really and truly, I feel like they're just trading one problem for another, because what are they gonna do with their solar panels? They say recycle. Where are they gonna recycle? I mean, are they gonna, that was the way my understanding was, with the turbine, turbine. And now they're burying those blades.
I can show you out in Texas where they're kind of stacked up.
Yeah. So, what are they gonna do? I mean, where are, have they got, is there a facility already built to recycle solar panels? And if so, where?
I've read they, they're not building more, cause they've got so many. You can read a lot of things, because in the program, you get a lot of the ones that are out there.
The solar panels?
Yeah, the solar panels.
I don't know if that's right or not. Okay, if I understood the, yeah, cause I went to the first. And I had been hearing that the solar panels, if they got burned, there was a substitution that sterilized the grass.
Well, I'd heard that too, but.
Please, I say.
They ensure that.
Okay. Okay, that's what they. But then they was also saying, this, this jump don't send its chips, okay, with the tariffs and stuff.
Hamburgers bar.
To the price of the panels.
Give it to you after fifty years.
But, as I said, I, I've just got my reservations about the solar fields and stuff, I don't feel like it generates enough electricity to, for the, about.
Usually there wasn't, where it says to be solar by, is it two thirty-five, or is three, two fifty, or for the state of Illinois?
Say that again.
For us to be rushing that.
Like twenty thirty-five, I think.
Is it twenty thirty-five, Illinois, that we sold it, just for, for states.
But just remember, twenty-five years ago, we spent billions of dollars, mission, one of the coal factories, all the coal plants.
Yeah, you wonder, twenty, ten, twenty years from now, what technology there'll be, or what'll come up that'll be better than.
I mean, maybe three to five years, yeah.
That's what I was gonna say, I've heard that they say they're only making the contracts for like thirty to forty years, because by that time, solar panel, solar.
Something else will come along.
Obsolete.
Well, the thing that surprises me, the New York Hope, like, they're, they're wasted two big nuclear plants, plants to be.
That's what he, that was his, what he made his living at, he was an operator of nuclear power plant.
Oh, okay.
I've read some articles where that, you know, they're saying nuclear is the better way to go.
It's cleaner now.
Well, the technology coming out now, the small modular reactors, that basically fit a parking lot and will produce two hundred, maybe, what's the ledger? Right, this, correct.
Generator, do like they used to do before you had electricity, had a generator in the basement, you'd go down and start it every morning, and they'd run all day.
Right.
And had energy stored up, collectors.
What was that?
And the energy stored up for.
I can't remember, cause my dad had that, but I don't know the points of place.
Really? Upgrade to this is, is like adding batteries to it.
Look, batteries today in my car, if I go down, they just explode.
Oh, good, yeah, thank you. Yeah, she, Brian. Pretty good size. I asked him whatever he might call it. And he's originally said, I didn't know whether it was.
But that wasn't, yeah.
Angels going in, wings. Really concerned. Yeah. Exactly. It's just seem like.
Take care of.
Every, other week, or something different.
I mean, maybe. Around the city of Paris.
Computer around three weeks to a mess, and you walk in.
I know.
Now you may as well climb in the mountain. Hundred fifty acres.
Natural gas, coal, or something like that.
You couldn't see where you went across the web.
Raising most of life is short.
Yeah, see, nobody knocked on my door. I just fell off, I should have received a letter in the mail. Have I received a letter? I did, I got it. I learned from him last month. That I have been approached by two or three, like Rage Power, and they never seen other one, I can't remember. And this company never approached me at all.
Keep hydrating, you still got any? Oh, I've got, I've got water up there. No, sir, Alex and Kate, I'm with the utility, I'll do the weird. So, yeah, but it's good to see this here in recent. I'm with another company called, called Razor Power. Just got throwing some operating assets, you're in the state. Yes, sir. But I, once again, just appreciate your facilitation. This has been a great opportunity for us. For the public to be heard. Yeah. Yeah, sorry. Oh, yeah, we're gonna talk to him. They took. Yeah. Yeah, Lord Will. Well, I appreciate it. Yeah, all right. All right, thank you. My God, this is. Eight minutes, Scott, you're doing this, that's all. You tell us, you tell them. I can't. So, I have Andy. Oh, yeah, fair question. I think we're a church, a school group, one part of the, eight people.
It's important. Basically. I did, I actually, it was, it was not. I think I actually laid down around two forty-five.
Yeah.
And my mother's not really working.
So you have to have that.
Along with the economic base.
Oh.
And help.
Basically, it's almost like.
You wanted to make sure I made it out before you went to sleep. Sitting up thinking about it. No, it's good. It's a good drive. It is, it's not that often. I did not. No, no, there's, there's none. And you can take seventy straight through the city now. It is, it was shut down for a long time. I think these repairs. Still a nightmare. You're trying to navigate. You can side swivel orange barrels without even realizing it's there.
Yes, yeah. They're right here. Yes.
It happened.
Yep, yep.
Yeah.
She was, she was in the greater. Like her.
Well, she's a man.
She gets her.
Well, I, I take people by the traffic rules sitting in, in that is proper or a suggestion.
Yep, yeah.
Because we have so much construction.
It was like the late night jury, right?
Um, just friends and neighbors. So while we waited for pizza, we drove down the road.
I grew up on kids, meat and salad.
Folks, we're still gonna rain delay another ten minutes or so. I'm sorry, buddy.
Doctor Lewis would like you to provide comments here during rain delay.
Back to TV studios for another episode. I'll tell you what, a lot of these hearings, they don't, they don't get as many listens as a broadcaster.
Oh, yeah.
It's great. It's a little, you know, little, little. I think you said it the first.
We have one, of course, in the area. And egg, egg, um. Although I do have, I think, tell the patients that we're getting Michigan excellent that I think is going to be a western lung that if it was safe for self, for the hearing tomorrow, they actually work in my case.
Well, yeah, they have.
Starting high situation. They don't really try, they don't want their.
Did you?
They don't share. Like, we're obligated to try to give you service. Like, we've given them reports that show it gets like eighty-five percent. So children are now fired. And, and the jurisdiction staff is just like, well, we don't have to feel so. Even though we know it's a business, that it's maybe. That it's. So I think we are bringing the experience to tell our public how safe it is, important to having, be the way for children. There, you're not interested in, and I just have a line.
Sue Harry's terrible. Oh, yeah, yeah. They met Harry there. Oh, yeah.
And actually, the real carrier has rights to have ten, with a ten. It's like, it's on the train, it goes down the river, it's. For Indiana, it's very like. We were like, guys, you guys, you need to solve this. So we needed, we needed to. I had a friend who was pointing back and he was like, maybe you can see it's something to your signal. Your position is how to report missions or personnel, teams, and it's.
And I heard there is. I, uh, recently.
And I was like.
So we mean, um, this daughter is married to my colleague.
You know, facility.
I spent some time, I was trying to get on the golf course.
I haven't, I haven't been. I think they resolved it two days later.
He is, gonna be honest. I wanted to ask.
See, they're twenty-one or twenty-two.
At the wedding, like, after like a couple hours. I was like, I'm just gonna, you know, like. I'm from Georgia. He played.
No, no, they don't.
Legend and art. He was so. I think he's. Yes.
They don't even.
I think.
To. Three, two large.
She decided.
And it's after.
Do cops.
It's way to one.
Oh, okay. Western side.
Which it doesn't look like. They're not going to, you know, my dad worked before, so here. Which is a good year for us to, to be on.
They do some trainings about, yeah, about five minutes from my dad's house. And as a kid, we, actually, I was telling the reset state, town, townhouse, cross restaurants. It's pretty grand, so I'm not related far as that, but I've just kind of grown up going all the way.
It is amazing, and it's actually, it's like.
Aubrey's state, yeah.
Um, when they.
I did baseball pitch there as a kid my entire life.
And then they actually, kids don't get in because of which, right? At the same level, the same way, that's like Jewish marriage. So the amount of.
Yeah. Very time. Um, Adam and Wayne play baseball.
Is, is.
So.
They probably be right in China, but it's around. To, to make example.
Okay.
I don't know.
I like it. Well, they have any restaurant recommendations here? There's a lot of good food. I would recommend fall or spring. I would not recommend June, July. It's whatever it is here.
And, yeah. And that's, those, those.
But they're.
Compared to small averages, like, um, yeah, a lot of stuff, we're just selling, yeah, we're just selling cash.
That's true, that's true.
I mean, you've been. Or beans or sardassera.
I got probably.
We. Only forty-eight acres. And then with friends, every little. But, yeah, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. We don't have to go too far. And my dad, he retired.
They're like, hey.
Some of those towns actually go into. All of those beautiful. And it's, it's a natural. Still working out. But he does the patriarchy work for it. So why I. Like, I capitalize, you know, there's a limousine across. And maybe, like I said, it's all. So we had a guy in the tree market. Very proud of it. Some of them are rental, like, they're gorgeous. Although they're beautiful, my mom's, they're getting so high. I mean, jerseys are so. Good for you. That's fine, she, I did round robin and she. I mean, it's fine for the kids who work with them, like the strangers, that she could like, not smell wrong, I don't do. Yeah, that's right. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. We, uh, my son. Yeah. So, oh boy, I shot, I had a fifteen year.
So I need some. I didn't get it, get it. Oh, it's gonna be weird tonight. He has more to ask.
All right, Mr. Pike, get all the questions answered for me. You ready? Yeah.
Round it out in here.
All right.
I, uh, I have a short thing. So she would explain it to me. I had a tutorial.
My keys.
Well, we know. But that's. That's in the hall. But the.
Because. But we're not necessarily.
That's okay. I'll just ask for anybody who wants to say anything.
Thank you.
They don't raise their hands.
We, we did want to follow your instructions.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That is, the goal is always for everybody to.
Yeah, she, uh, just got her master's degree in social work.
That's.
Really? In other words, IU, I.
They.
They forced PU.
They broke up.
Broke up and, uh, yeah. She's. I don't know why it is. Farmers use it from here. She said, this is kind of a job with. No longer, uh, maybe on our helping areas.
That's where. That is really important for that. That's what they were. And then, um, I was lost in years of the last school, math school.
All the kids used up our daughter's, uh, great babies, and, uh, one of the author and one of the. What is it, writer's fiction? Doesn't end with Illinois, uh, near Springfield, uh.
It's not the way it is.
Uh, it's all.
I mean, not, I mean, with.
Things.
Like the.
Yeah, she's got five books out, I think, and, uh, well, she's a stable mom.
For her.
Yeah, uh, so, yes, they get an Airbnb for a weekend and knock out a couple of them. And our other daughter picks, uh, sourdough bread. She has a chest of cheese, I'm seeing it in her face, it's my station. Everyone says that he knows his own place. Realize how to retire that slowly with it.
An RV, no.
Maybe in two hours. Yeah. I think your living brother, uh, also turns in.
Yes, we can leave that. I asked, I asked you. Like, he's never coming here.
Good. Okay, let's do it. You ready, Andy?
Yep.
Are you? All right. Always look sharp.
All right, we're back on the record. Thank you, folks, for, uh, waiting for us at seven thirty-five PM, and, uh, there are times when, uh, attorneys need to meet and resolve things, and, uh, is there anything, uh, Mr. Uphoff, that you want to address before we go, uh, start with your next witness?
Not at this time.
Okay, Mr. Kite, do you have anything you wish to address?
No, not at this time.
All right, very good. All right, and, uh, Mr. Uphoff, you have one remaining witness, an expert, and then there's a couple of gentlemen, uh, who wish to testify in support of the, uh, project, so.
That, yes, that's my understanding, they're not, um, not affiliated with us, or are being called by me as a witness, but they did indicate during the break that they were looking to testify in support.
Okay, and, uh, what we'll do is, after the last expert witness for the applicant, Dr. Loomis testifies, then we'll have folks in support of the application for this project, they'll testify, then folks who are opposed will testify, and then folks who are neutral on the issue will testify. And like I said before the break, you can either testify, come up here, be sworn in, and, uh, be subject to cross-examination, or you can wait, and there will be a section of public comment where you just have three minutes to say what you want to say, and you're not subject to cross-examination by the county board or any of the attorneys. So with that, let's, uh, Mr. Uphoff, you may call your next witness.
At this time, we would call Dr. David Loomis.
Good evening, sir. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give shall be true?
Yes.
Very good. And you are Dr. David Loomis?
That's correct.
L-O-O-M-I-S?
Yes.
And, uh, Mr. Uphoff, uh, I think you can establish his credentials, uh, just in a cursory fashion, I know who he is, I've heard him testify, and he will be an expert witness, but, uh, let's at least get it on the record what he's an expert at.
Certainly. Uh, doctor, thank you for being here this evening, and we've got your name now, but if you could give us just a very brief, uh, recitation of your credentials and your current occupation, we would greatly appreciate it.
Yeah, um, David Loomis, I have a PhD in economics, uh, from Temple University, and I was a professor of economics at Illinois State University for twenty-six years, I'm professor emeritus, and I'm current, and while I was at the university, I was, um, one of the co-founders of the Center for Renewable Energy, and also, uh, the executive director of the Institute for Regulatory Policy Studies that did, uh, electric policy issues, and, uh, since retiring, and actually before, um, and president of Strategic Economic Research LLC, uh, and, uh, also owner of the same.
And so, Dr. Loomis, the, uh, years of experience that you've had, how much of that, or the last, let's say, uh, ten years, has been involved with, uh, determining the economic impact of, uh, renewable energy projects?
Well, uh, while I was at the university, I, uh, published, uh, several peer-reviewed articles, uh, on, on the topic, and, uh, have done, um, consulting projects, uh, looking at the economic impacts of wind, solar, transmission, uh, and various other, uh, energy projects of, over the last, say, fifteen years.
And as it relates to the state line energy center project, did you have an opportunity to, uh, research and prepare a report in relation to the economic impact of that proposed project?
Yes.
And did you prepare a, it looks like a, a two-page, um, summary report for that?
Yes.
And, um, I believe we've handed that out, but at this time, I would ask, um, unless additional foundation is needed to move that into evidence, and I believe this would be number four.
Mr. Kite, any objection?
No, sir.
Dr. Loomis's summary report is admitted into evidence as applicant's exhibit four, and it will be made part of the record for the county board to consider in, uh, its final vote on this issue. Go right ahead, Mr. Uphoff.
Thank you. And, uh, Dr. Loomis, did you also prepare a PowerPoint slideshow that would help walk through some of the elements of your methodology and your findings in relation to this project?
Yes.
All right, and we've got that up on the screen here, so at this point in time, um, could you begin walking us through how you went about determining the economic impact for the state line energy project?
Dr. Loomis, before you answer that, Mr. Kite, do you have any objection to him testifying as an expert?
No, sir.
He's in as an expert.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Uh, is there a clicker for the PowerPoint?
I hope.
Okay.
We'll just click through for you as best we can.
Yeah, that sounds great. Uh, so, um, I prepared an economic impact, uh, report for, um, for this project, um, using methodology, uh, and software called Implan, uh, for the economic impact portion of the study. Uh, Implan is one of two major economic software, uh, packages that, uh, economic developers would use, it's not specific to energy projects, but would be used by economic development professionals, uh, to prepare, uh, reports like this. Next slide. When we're looking at the economic impacts, we're really taking the capital expenditures and the operating expenditures, and breaking those out into how much of that is going to be spent, uh, in the county, how much of that will be spent, um, in the state, and how much of that will be, uh, um, spent, uh, outside the, the state, those non-regional expenditures. And why that's important is that money that is spent, uh, right here in Edgar County, will then recycle throughout the economy, that money gets, uh, spent, uh, and spent again throughout the economy, in what economists call the multiplier effect, and so what we try and do is, uh, estimate that portion that's going to be spent, uh, here, uh, in Edgar County, and then in the, um, state of Illinois, and one of that is going to be an economic leakage, meaning that it's spent, uh, and that money flows, uh, outside the state of Illinois. Next slide. So when we look at the economic impacts, we're really looking at three different, uh, effects. Uh, the first is going to be, uh, the direct, uh, impacts. These are onsite labor professional services, so during construction, these are what everybody thinks of, uh, when we look at economic impacts, it's going to be those construction workers that are onsite building, uh, the project. But there's also another impact, which is those indirect impacts. Indirect impacts are supply chain impacts, where the company's going to be spending money in the local community, uh, and, uh, hiring local firms, so they're not direct employees of the company, but they're employees of other companies, Edgar County companies, that are going to be, uh, um, uh, used by the company to supply, um, uh, goods, materials, services, uh, to, uh, this project. And then the third impact is called, um, induced impacts. Induced impacts are where, uh, because people have more, uh, money, because they have jobs, or, uh, even landowner payments, they will then get, um, uh, have money to spend in the local community. Induced impacts are really those things that are ordinary household purchases, like buying groceries, dining out, uh, entertainment, and so forth. Because people have money, they're going to spend it in, uh, uh, in the local community, and so those are going to be, uh, jobs largely at retail, or waiters, waitresses, those kinds of things, uh, that people will just spend, uh, their income on in the local community. Next slide. And next. So when we look about jobs, one thing in particular in this project, uh, is that, as the name implies, it's right near, uh, the state line. As well, it's, uh, adjacent, um, it, it's in the corner, so it easily could draw labor from non-Edgar County residents, um, even though we would think of them as local, local in this case could be across the state border, or across the county border. So in order to account for, uh, the proximity of the project, uh, in relation to those areas, we took a very conservative approach of saying how much of that labor is going to be sourced from the county. And you can see, we have, um, uh, there are seventeen, uh, direct jobs, uh, there for Edgar County, uh, a more modest amount for, uh, uh, indirect and induced impacts, whereas you can see a much higher amount for, uh, Illinois, uh, state of Illinois jobs, uh, something on the order of, um, two hundred, two hundred and fifty, uh, jobs, which kind of goes along with what Ian had said on, on, uh, Thursday night, in terms of the total number of construction workers that would be working, uh, on the project. Similarly, on operations, you have the direct jobs, those are going to be, uh, largely solar, um, technicians, um, um, that will be working, uh, onsite, but as well, there will be some, uh, ongoing supply chain, uh, vegetation management is oftentimes, uh, outsourced to, to a local firm, things like that, that would be, uh, in those indirect, uh, impacts, and then, of course, uh, induced impacts are those ordinary household purchases. Next slide. When we look at earnings, earnings include both salaries, uh, and benefits, and I won't go through each of these lines, but only to say that these, uh, tend to be, uh, good-paying jobs, especially in the direct and indirect, uh, categories. The induced categories, average wages are smaller because of the nature of the kinds of jobs those are, they're grocery store workers, retail workers, waiters, waitresses, uh, and so forth, uh, and so those tend to be, um, not as well-paying, uh, on the whole. Next slide. The last, uh, number is economic output. Economic output is a number like, uh, gross domestic product, it's looking at the value of goods and services, uh, in the economy, uh, and, uh, what's different about this is it, uh, it includes two important things that aren't included in the other two measures. Uh, the first is landowner payments, uh, so the lease payments that will go from the company to those landowners, uh, in the community, um, and that's included in economic output, but it's not included in earnings because it's not being earned, and it's not a job, so it's not included in those two other measures. And the other thing that's included in economic output is property taxes. So property taxes aren't earned, uh, they are transfer payment from the company to, um, uh, units of local government, and so, uh, those get counted in, um, the value of goods and services and economic output, but they're not earnings, uh, and they're not jobs. Now, the, the second major, um, part of the study in addition to jobs is looking at, uh, property taxes. And, uh, property taxes in the state of Illinois, uh, are pretty straightforward for solar, there is a standard valuation, uh, that is, uh, provided by state law, it's two hundred and eight, uh, two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars per megawatt of capacity at the time that it was passed, and then it gets adjusted for inflation each and every year since the passage of that, um, of that law, and then that continues on even after the project is built, so it's adjusted for inflation, what the law calls a trending factor, uh, but it's really the consumer price index. When the project's built, uh, the firm also gets to take depreciation, uh, but the depreciation, again, is in the state statute, and that's four percent a year. So in order to project out what those property taxes are going to be over the next thirty years, we need to then have some prediction as to what's going to happen to the consumer price index, or what's going to happen to inflation, uh, over the next thirty years. Um, no sane economist would give you a forecast of inflation for the next thirty years, uh, but in order to be, uh, objective and also to be conservative, we took an estimate, um, of the next, uh, from the Wall Street Journal of economists' view of what the next five years was going to be, and we use that to protect out, uh, for the next, um, uh, thirty years of this project. Uh, could you go back? Uh, uh, so the, the, uh, future inflation is two-point-three-one percent, um, when we did that. Um, that, I think, is a very conservative view of what future inflation would be, um, you know, that would only be the wish of the Fed chair, uh, to get inflation, uh, that low. We also had a very conservative, uh, assumption that, that property tax rates, uh, would not, um, change over the next thirty years, which, um, if property tax rates were to increase, as they generally, uh, do in Illinois, that would mean that more property taxes would be paid from this project, uh, than, uh, otherwise, so again, that's a very, uh, conservative assumption, um, in looking at these property tax estimates. Next slide. So when we look at the, the, uh, total over, um, the, the, uh, life of the project, and, um, and we have estimates on a year-by-year, um, basis, uh, of the, the total, uh, but we have, um, a, a little over twenty-three million dollars in total property taxes paid, uh, over the, the life of the project. You'll notice here in, um, in the slides, um, the handout has, uh, a longer list of year-by-year-by-year, uh, it's hard to capture that, but you'll notice that the first year is the biggest year, uh, and then it decreases each year. The important thing to know is that it never goes to zero, because even though they get to take four percent depreciation, there's a floor built into the legislation, so they can't depreciate the project more than seventy percent, or, in other words, thirty percent of the, of the value has to remain, uh, and then you have that trending factor, that inflation, that actually dips, uh, it, it dips and starts rising, uh, after that. Next slide. So that, that was the summary slide, but each of the different taxing entities gets their slice of the property taxes. Uh, Edgar County General Fund would get, uh, over a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. Community College, Townships, Fire District, Ambulance District would all, uh, receive funds from this project, but if you know, uh, Illinois tax base, uh, the biggest taxing entity in, uh, any jurisdiction is going to be the School District, so next slide. And so you see, um, uh, the Paris Community, uh, Unit School District Four is going to get, um, uh, seven hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars in the first year, uh, that declines, uh, slightly over time, uh, but you see the, the total there is thirteen, uh, point-three million dollars, uh, in total over the life of the project. Next slide. So in summary, we're, uh, estimating, uh, twenty-six local jobs, uh, for, uh, Edgar County residents storing construction, almost sixteen. Community College, Townships, Fire District, Ambulance District would all receive funds from this project. But if you know Illinois tax base, the biggest taxing entity in any jurisdiction is going to be the School District. So next slide? And so you see the Paris Community Unit School District, four, is going to get $766,000 in the first year. That declines slightly over time. But you see the total there is $13.3 million in total over the life of the project. Next slide? So in summary, we're estimating 26 local jobs for Edgar County residents during construction, almost 16 long-term permanent jobs during the life of the project, 13.3, we mentioned, was the School District, $3.2 million to Edgar County, and 23 million overall to all the different taxing entities.
Thank you, Dr. Loomis. If I could, I want to follow back up on a couple of the slides there towards the end. So when, in, yeah, there you go. When, talking about the conservative approaches that you were taking, and again, I want to make sure that this is clear. So when you're saying that you're being conservative in this, it's that you don't want to over-project. Is that fair?
That's right.
And so, number one, one of the things that you mentioned was you calculated this on a 30-year life of the project operating. Is that right?
Correct.
But if there was an opportunity for the project to operate longer, for example, if the lease term allowed it to go to 40 years, then obviously you'd have 10 more years of revenue that could be added on to these. Is that right?
That's right.
But to remain conservative, we want the 30-year estimate and projection. Correct? And then you also talked about how the inflation factor, that's a very conservative number, at least as it appears right now. Is that correct?
Yes.
And something that you started to mention, too, was once the depreciation factor bottoms out, and that's no longer being taken, then the inflation factor will start to drive those annual numbers back up a little bit. Is that right?
That's right. I do need to correct my answer just previously. Generally, we do look at a 30-year project life. But in this case, we estimated an even more conservative view of just 25 years.
So these are 25-year numbers that are in here?
That is correct.
Okay. So, and if the project then goes out to 40, that's another 15 years of revenue on top of that.
That's correct.
All right. So that's a very conservative number then, in that particular context.
Yes.
Additionally, then, you also indicated that the taxing rate remaining the same in the county, at the county level, or even the state level, is another conservative factor. Is that correct?
Yes.
And would it be fair to say, it's sometimes hard to understand and equate all of this, but would it be sort of accurate to say that the taxing portion specific to the solar project is sort of like a ship that's floating on the water? And the water being the baseline tax assessment for the county? And then there, if, so for example, if the county raises its taxes, that raises the water level, which pushes the ship higher above. Is that correct?
Yes. There would be more taxes paid if the tax rate is increased by those taxing entities.
So it's not as if all the other land around the project would have its taxes going up while the taxes on the project remain static? They would rise at the same rate as everything else?
Yes.
Okay. Then, when we were talking about the breakdown to the different entities, and I think up here, you've got the total breakdown. But if we go to the schools, here, you've got averaged out that over, and this would just be over 25 years, as I understand it now, it's over a half million dollars per year. Is that correct?
Correct.
Now, the, and you do, or would it be fair to say that you have experience having looked at other economic development types of projects for communities?
Besides?
Besides solar?
Yes.
Right. So in this scenario, as opposed to comparing it to, let's say, a large residential subdivision, right? If you were to put in a significant number of homes in two community, that would ultimately drive a lot of property tax revenue for the local taxing bodies. Is that right?
Yes.
But along with that, you would also have expenses that would be incurred by those taxing bodies because now you'd have more people in the community that they have to provide services for. Is that right?
Right. There would be more need for roads. There would be more need for educational services because those residential subdivisions will be populated with people who have children that'll need to be educated. So there is kind of corresponding expenses that come along with that type of development.
So for the physical properties, you've now got to maintain the streets, maintain the sewers, and the streetlights, and all those things, right?
Correct.
And then, as you indicated, if those subdivisions have children coming out of them, matriculating into the schools, now you've got more students in school. You may need more classroom space, more computers, more student aides, more teachers to handle that influx of additional kids. Is that right?
Correct.
And along with those additional needs come additional costs to the taxing bodies. So there's a sort of corresponding offset. You're increasing the tax base, but you're also increasing some of the costs that go along with it.
Yes.
But in this scenario, or a project similar to this, or let's just take state line exactly, you're going to have all of this additional tax revenue coming into, say, the local school district, but there's going to be no additional students, right?
Correct.
So you're not going to have a need for additional computers, or additional classroom space, additional aides, additional teachers. All of this additional revenue is coming in without any of those corresponding offsets. Is that right?
Correct.
And not to call children a burden for myself, but if you're thinking about it in terms of economic impacts, there are burdens that come along with increasing the number of kids in school, burdens on the building, burdens on the system, right?
Yes.
But here, you're getting all these economic benefits of the additional tax revenue without any of those additional, quote-unquote, burdens. Is that fair to say?
Correct.
All right. And that would be the same for all of the taxing bodies that are going to be impacted by this. Is that right?
Yes.
So for example, the, you know, road districts, ambulance districts, fire districts, you know, those emergency service districts in particular, additional revenue coming in, but no additional people that they need to serve. Is that right?
Correct.
So again, top-line numbers for just 25 years, as opposed to 30 or even 40, is a total economic impact on the property tax side of over $23 million. Is that right?
Yes.
And then on the job side, you've got direct impacts for Edgar County and the millions of dollars. And again, that's on the conservative end because you weren't even factoring out for the potential longer life of the project. Is that fair to say?
Correct.
All right. No further questions?
All right, very good. Thank you, Mr. Uphoff. Thank you for your testimony, Dr. Loomis. Time for questions now for Dr. Loomis. First, from members of the Edgar County Board. Chairman Boy.
The inflation factor that seems to appear in '47 to '48, where it starts to take the depreciation off, and then in '47, the payment to property taxes, $600,848. The following year is $614,000. So it increases by not quite 14,000.
Correct.
In prior years, does the inflation rate apply to any of the other years prior to that?
Yes. So you correctly pointed out that in 2047 is when it kind of bottoms out. So up until that point, you have this interplay between inflation, which we assumed was 2.31%, and 4% depreciation. So there's a net negative. So you see that decline. When it hits 2047, it's fully depreciated. It's hit that 70% max depreciation. And so all you have is inflation boosting it up and no offset with depreciation. So that's why you get this kind of bottom out, and then it starts rising again.
Do you have a rough figure on what the project means to the county in 2029 as far as equalized assist value? In other words, once you run it through the formula, what does that project worth?
I have that calculated in terms of EAV, as well as spare cash value. But I don't have that number in mind, but I can certainly provide that.
That would be great, Dr. Appreciate that.
Yes.
Mr. Uphoff, would you please put that on your list of things to do and provide to opposing counsel, Mr. Kite?
Yes, sir.
The EAV. Thank you. Very good. Good questions, Chairman. Anybody else? Ms. Ellis?
Yep. You have listed here 26 local jobs on construction. How long's your construction period?
Typically, a project could be up to 18 months to construct. But you could think of these 18 jobs as kind of job years because they've been converted to full-time equivalents, which means that one job equals 2,080 hours of work. So whether it takes 12 months or 18 months is going to be indifferent because we've kind of adjusted for that in our analysis.
Because if you do the math, it's $159,000 per FTE.
Yeah, and that will be, that will include both salary and benefits. And we assume that these were going to be prevailing wages for these jobs because the project would have to have
You know, our job is to be pessimistic. It's nice to have the optimistic, and we can hope that that's realistic, but that's not our job. So if periods while you're offline are either due to an issue or during decommissioning, what's the, what tax rate is being used?
The valuation of the project is based on the megawatt capacity of the solar project and is not dependent on the output of the solar farm. So if they had an outage, you know, due to some whatever reason, the state law says that it's valued according to its capacity, not its production. So that would be indifferent. I'm not sure we've had case law or challenge that said if they were out of commission for, you know, a lengthy period of time, what that would look like. But in terms of shorter outages or shortfalls of production, it would not vary.
How about during the time for decommissioning?
So once the project is out of service, this valuation goes away. So it would revert to agricultural land and be taxed as agricultural land at that point.
Who's paying for that?
The landowner.
So the landowner can be paying for a year at farm land rate, but not, it would not be productive farm ground? So at what point? At what point does it stop being taxed as farm ground?
When it, yeah, when it goes into commercial operation.
So the, so the landowner is responsible for the taxes for a year to 18 months prior to the switch being turned on, even though it is not producing a crop?
I don't know, ultimately, yes, from the county's perspective. I don't know what arrangement is. I'm not privy to the land lease and whether I, but I has agreed to pay those taxes on behalf of a landowner, or how that would work out. But from the county perspective, you would just be getting agricultural land taxes from somebody, ultimately, the landowner, the deed owner. But they may have some, you know, compensation somewhere.
To carry on with that particular question, it is now, the switch is flipped and it's operating. Is there a layer of taxes? In other words, is the farm ground now being taxed at a non-productive level? And then the commercial assessment on top of that? Or is it all one?
It is all one. So the solar project includes the agricultural land that sits underneath it. That's different than wind, where you have a single turbine, and the parcel is still taxed as agricultural land because almost all of it is in production. But here, the land is assumed, it goes with the solar project.
Any other questions from folks on the county board? All right? Questions from members of units of local government, including school districts? Questions from members of the public who either live in Edgar County or own ground in Edgar County? Yes, ma'am? Could you please state your name for the record?
Amy Bell.
And how do you spell your first name?
AMY.
AMY?
We're traditional here.
Because I know that some people spell it other ways. Go ahead, Ms. Bell, with your questions for Dr. Loomis.
Okay. So I know, like, in Paris, there's a lot of Indiana residents that come here and have jobs here, because I work in Indiana. So what guarantee is there that the, I think, 26 would be actual Edgar County residents?
There is no guarantee. That is our best estimate, and I would say is very, very, very conservative estimate to the number of jobs. In other projects where you didn't have, that aren't in the, by the state line, or, you know, directly in the county line, you would see multiples of 26 jobs being, going to local county residents. So we've, I've tried the best I could to take that into account and produce estimates that would be, you know, again, conservative. And in my opinion, likely more than this, that you'd see more than 26 jobs coming from Edgar County residents.
Okay. And then, we have businesses closing down in Paris right now. So you were talking about people that were working, spending money back in Edgar County. Again, what guarantee is it when we have businesses closing down that we're going to see that money in Edgar County versus them going to Indiana to get what they need?
Yeah. That's an excellent question. And I will say, you know, so what the InPlan software does is it looks at existing spending patterns. So it will say, right now, what do Edgar County residents spend their money, their household income, on in those things? But I will say, for recently closed businesses, the InPlan software, because it relies on government statistics, is usually a year in arrears of understanding all those, you know, residences and where they spend their money. And if a business had been, you know, in commercial operation and then closed, it wouldn't be captured in those statistics yet. But, you know, it'd have to wait to catch up to realize that, no, that business is closed and money can't be spent there.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Any other questions from folks from Edgar County or who own land in Edgar County? Any questions for Dr. Loomis from folks who live outside of Edgar County? Edgar County staff and consultants, Mr. Kite? Mr. Dobelstein?
Dr. Loomis, this might be, might have answered this, or might not be able to answer. Why is the 25-year project expectation used?
As you can tell, I was surprised by that because I said 30 years, and that is our typical length. I don't know for sure, but oftentimes, the reason that we will do a shorter time period is to match a lease, you know, a number of years of a lease, or to coincide with that so that if the lease is 25 years so that if the lease is twenty-five years versus thirty years. But I'm not privy to those lease terms. I can only conjecture what would typically be there. And again, obviously, the twenty-five years is a more conservative look than the, than the thirty years, but that's the best I can do with the information given.
And the, the lease memorandums indicate that there's an option for five years every, could be continued for five years after the twenty-five-year lease runs with a total of fifty years, but that would all be at that lower rate for the taxation for the project. The project itself is for fifty years, this application is.
Yeah.
But the, would you agree with that?
So what again would happen, if it did go, let's do the hypothetical, and if it did go for the fifty years, you would still bottom out there at the year 2047 and it would be subject to, to that inflation factor from that point forward. So actually, the EAV would continue to increase and move forward. Typically, on a fifty-year lease, you know, there's, at some point in time, solar panels generally, you know, degrade over time. A small amount is reduction in production. So I, I don't know what the, any future plans would be, but from purely a taxation point of view, you would see increased taxes from that 2047 to the, the total fifty-year life.
Thank you for your questions, Mr. Dobelstein. So, Dr. Loomis, it's your understanding that there's twenty-five-year leases?
I don't know.
You don't know?
I, I just don't know.
Mr. Uphoff, is, is it a twenty-five-year lease but a potential for a fifty-year project? I'm just trying to get my head around how long this is going to be.
That, that's correct. So there are options on the lease, so the options can go up to fifty years. Currently, in the request for this report, the company wanted to be conservative, so they just indicated twenty-five as the outset. And then obviously, it could go up from there, so.
Gotcha. Okay, thanks, thanks for that clarification. All right, then, do you have any redirect examination of your witness?
Just a couple. So you were asked a couple of questions about when the, the taxes would initiate and then what would happen during decommissioning. But suffice to say, taxes are going to be due at the particular rate that they're determined to be every year, or in Illinois, paid one year in arrears. So whether that payment is coming from the company or coming from the, the landowner would be a function of their lease agreement. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right. And you're not privy to all the details on that, so it's unclear whether it'd be paid by the, the company or the, the landowner, but that's something that's been negotiated between those two private entities.
Yes.
All right. You were also then asked a question, and I just wanted to clarify it, so capacity versus production. So this tax base for the state of Illinois is not based on production, it's just based on capacity. So if by some reason, the, the project wasn't able to produce for, I don't know, months at a time, that wouldn't reduce their, the amount of taxes they owe. The amount of taxes they owe is going to be consistent no matter what, because it's based on that nameplate capacity for production. Is that right? Or, excuse me, for capacity?
It's, it's just based on capacity.
Okay. So any shortfalls in production along the way doesn't implicate any reduction in taxes that the company would owe for the county?
Can you say that again?
So any shortfalls in production throughout the time isn't going to equate to a reduction in, in taxes that they owe.
Yeah.
And so it's not like they could say, well, we don't want to pay a bunch of taxes this year, so we're just going to shut it down for six months and reduce our, our tax burden, right?
Right.
They're still going to owe the same amount regardless.
Yes.
Okay.
No further questions. All right, very good, thank you. Final questions for the witness come from members of the Edgar County Board. Ms. Ellis.
What's the oldest solar system that you've been involved with?
Trying to think, I can think of the oldest one that I did in, in Illinois for this type of project, but I believe I did other ones outside of Illinois. So, and I, I want to say it's been six years ago for the Illinois-based one and probably a good ten years ago for a solar one in another state.
Because I know on wind, some of those older ones, especially over by Illinois State, that they've gone back in and retooled them and used the same structures. So if that happened with solar, then would our tax, would the tax, taxable income to us go back up to, as if it was new, because the output would be new?
That's exactly right. So on those cases where projects get repowered, first off, they would have to come in for a new permit and ask for permission to, to do that. They couldn't just do that on their own. And then, once they repowered and had, in this case, had new solar panels, the, the capacity and formula would kind of restart, so you'd start at a year-one basis again. So it would mean actually much more tax revenue to the, to the county than the lower base, you know, at year, whatever the year is, that you're currently on that, on that schedule. It would jump up to be comparable to a year-one amount that we've had before, depending on, you know, the capacity and inflation factor since then.
Okay, on that same thought, you know, we saw this happen in Morua. Not that it was one that had, I don't think it had been in operation over a long time, but let's say there's another big hailstorm wipes it out and you've got to retool and put in new panels. Does that start to clock back?
If it's a, if it's a repair, I don't think so. You know, if you're just repairing panels of things, because there are panel failures, you know, and, and those get swapped out, you know, as a, as a matter of routine maintenance. It would only be if they're kind of taking the whole system down and repowering it with all new, all new panels in that.
Mr. Chairman.
Along that line, but probably a little bit more complicated. Say in the eighth year of depreciation, the company sold it to another company. Now, the value might not be four hundred million, it might only be three hundred million or three hundred and fifty. Would, and the depreciation schedule would transfer, wouldn't transfer to the new company, it would be a completely new appreciation schedule. Would then the taxes change?
I think your, your premise would be incorrect. One, it would not vary by ownership. Again, it varies by when the actual solar farm is placed into service and what the capacity of that, of that project was. If they change ownership, the new owners would just be on that same depreciation schedule and same taxes owed rather than what was questioned, like the ask, if I understand. Yep, thank you.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any other questions from members of the board? Thank you, Dr. Loomis, you may step down. Mr. Uphoff, is that it for you?
It is, but I would like to just make sure to get a couple of additional exhibits locked down.
Yes.
So the other evening, we were going through, and I know we were trying to move as expeditiously as possible, so the PowerPoint presentations for a couple of the witnesses didn't get moved into evidence. So if I could, I'd like to move those into evidence now. I, I may not have the exact order here, but I'll try to be close. There was a testimony and a, from a sound expert, Mr. Polling, Jacob Polling, and he provided a slide deck, and we would ask that that slide deck be admitted as an exhibit to go along with his testimony. And Mr. Tuck has the numbers, but I think, is that number six?
Five.
Five, sorry, that'd be number five.
Any objection, Mr. Kite?
No objection.
All right. That's in as, exhibit, exhibit five is in evidence to be considered by the county board. That's Mr. Polling's sound study. All right, go ahead.
And then we had Mr. Balcom, the, from the Fire Risk Alliance, who presented testimony and also had a slide deck, so I'd ask that his be admitted as exhibit six.
Mr. Kite?
Okay.
All right. Admit, exhibit, applicant's exhibit six is in and will be considered by the county board.
After that, we had Dr. Christopher Olson presented evidence and a slide deck, so we'd ask that that be admitted as number seven.
Mr. Kite?
No objection.
Applicant's exhibit seven is in evidence and will be considered by the county board.
And then this evening, Ms. Rowley testified and had a slide deck, so we would ask that that be admitted. And if a copy, I know we had some copies, but we'll make sure to give an official copy to Mr. Tuck, but, but ask that that be, I believe, the number eight.
Mr. Kite, any objection?
No objection.
All right.
I'm sorry.
Exhibit eight is in.
And then lastly, the report from, and slide deck from Dr. Loomis that was just presented, his report, we've already entered, but slide deck, we'd ask to be number nine.
Any objection, Mr. Kite?
No.
Applicant's exhibit nine is in evidence. All of those exhibits will be allowed to be considered by the Edgar County Board when they make their decision. All right. Anything further from you, Mr. Uphoff?
No further evidence at this time.
So the applicant rests.
Yes, sir.
Very good. All right, it's time to hear from the public. All right. Like I said before the break, you can either testify, come up here and testify under oath. I'll swear you in, just like I did the, did the other witnesses. And if you're an Edgar County resident, you have thirty minutes. If you're a non-resident, you have three minutes. If you don't want to testify under oath, you just want to make a public comment, into that later tonight as well. And you can come up here and not be subject to cross-examination, and you'll have three minutes of public comment. One other key distinction is, if you testify under oath, you're not only subject to cross-examination, but your testimony can be considered as evidence, in this case, to be considered by the county board. Public comment is just public comment. You can say what you want to say, and you're not subject to cross-examination, but it is not actually evidence that would be considered by the county board. So with that said, we're going to go in order, folks in favor, folks opposed, and folks who are neutral. May I see a show of hands of folks who wish to testify under oath, who are in favor of the application? All right. Okay, this gentleman here, okay. Mr. Byers, are you getting your witnesses together? Okay, we'll take the gentleman in the ball cap. Come on up to the podium. Mr. Byers, how many folks do you have back here who want to testify? Gentleman in the black t-shirt?
Yes.
Okay. And the gentleman next to him in, looks like a jacket maybe that's black or hoodie or something? I can't see that far. He'll be heck driving back on Route sixteen and one-twenty-one to Spring Patch, but, all right. Sir, do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give shall be true?
I do.
Okay, sir, what is your name?
Randall Peterson.
Okay, and could you spell both names for the record?
Just Randy, R-A-N-D-Y, and Peterson, P-E-T-E-R-S.
S-O-N? Okay, very good. All right, and what town do you live in?
I live less than two miles from the project.
So you're in.
Stratton Township, Edgar County.
You're in Edgar County, so you have thirty minutes if you wish to use all that time.
I don't use that much. And in fact, I'm not even sure if I should do it under testimony, but.
Go ahead, Mr. Peterson.
The reason I did is because I kind of wear two hats in this situation. The first hat is I've spent the last twenty-five years in the construction. Same company for twenty-four years, and we built a lot of renewable land and solar projects along with coal-fired powerhouses, oil refineries, gas turbines across the country and Canada. So I've personally seen a lot of the construction, the decommission of solar farms and wind farms. I participated in them. As an Edgar County resident, most people in this room know me, I love this community. This is home, this is everything to me. I would not for a second get up here if I thought there was anything going to be ill presented to the people of Edgar County or my neighbors or my son, who's going to completely come back and live in Stratton Township, right down the road from this project. I personally watched them being built, that are part of building them in Canada, clear down to the tip of Texas over the last twenty years. We've decommissioned two, three, actually, three projects, two of them being three hundred acres, one at a hundred and fifty acres. Very simple process, remove the panels, you pull the post out of the ground, same as tearing out a pinchrobe, stack them up, come in, they strap them, cable buried deep enough that within months of us getting done, out of the way, the farmers came in, dropped their plows back in the ground. Ground's going to need some fertilizer, same as if you had set aside ground or anything else, you're going to have to go in and fertilize it, obviously. But there's no ill things happening to the soil. Most of this ground that we were tore down, these, are decommissioned, these projects had sheep running on them, and that's how they handled their vegetation, but no long-term effects. Like I said, the farmers were able to go in, drop their plows back in the ground and go back to work. Building these, I witnessed it save more family farms than I've ever watched it hurt across the country. Guys were able to take production grounds, put some of it in renewable to help subsidize the rest of it. And I'll get into that with my second hat in a second, but I, I, guys have watched this. I've watched battery storage. Has there been a lot of decommission? No, because it's still new enough. It's what's made the solar industry so great now, because now you can store this energy on-site, you can sell it when it's needed. It's made it great for landowners, it's made it great for these companies, it's made it great for counties because it keeps growing the tax base. We did have a project where we had to move the battery storage, so we did go in and take out the foundations. I haven't seen the drawings, I haven't been privy to how they're going to put the foundations in for this project, but the foundations that we put in in both Georgia and in Texas were very simple, caissoned, drilled, concrete, more, or less concrete than what went into that old batteries facility than what you guys have in Indian Darryl out there on the west side of town. But minimal, and easy to take out, dig it out, put in new, we moved, you know, moved this project a couple of miles, put in new caisson, put the battery storage on. Again, I can address, what I've seen with my own eyes and what I've touched with my own hands, I've been a part of this industry for over twenty years. It'll put a lot of people to work, a lot of good Edgar County people, there's a lot of people in the trades and the operators, electricians, laborers that live in our community, live in Stratton Township alone, that have worked on numerous of these projects across the East State, across the country. I'm excited for them because they might actually have a project they can stay home and enjoy Christmas time with their families and not be traveling all the time. It's great to see some forward growth. Great people. We don't have to worry about, with having the trades involved, you don't have to worry about a bunch of outsiders coming in, tearing up our community. We've got a lot of locally-based people that are going to be a part of this project. I've seen it time and time again. It's a great, Mr. Hilton, you know, he lives right in the middle of this project, and his income came from working the same company I did for years in the renewable business. You know, it, it's great. There's more people in this area that are affected by it in a positive way than ever was in the, but that's my one hat. That's what I've done for years. Like I said, I wouldn't, wouldn't be for this if it wasn't good for our community, good for our township. My next hat is a landowner, farmer, a father. I have a son that wants to come back and farm. There's nothing more in this world that I love more than agriculture, because there's nothing more in this world that he loves than agriculture. And I'm very fortunate to have a son that wants to come back and be a part of it. So as many others, we're always trying to find out, figure out ways to, how do we grow? How do we bring our kids back to Edgar County, get them to work on our farms, be, create parts of society? Unfortunately, we have a landowner, he's got great kids that went off and got educated and they've made lives for themselves elsewhere. That's great for them, it's awesome. It puts him in a, in a tough situation. What do you do? Agriculture sucks. There's no money being made right now. Anybody that's directly involved in it knows this. It's a terrible business to be in, but what do you do? It's in your blood. You know, the old saying, these old farmers don't die, they just dry up and blow away. You know, there's a lot of truth to that. And when you don't have the next generation coming in, I couldn't even imagine the stress that Mike and Lloyd had to go through to think about the fact of doing something different on their family farm than farming. It's a rough, I hate it, I hate it for them, you know, but they had a great opportunity. But they had a great opportunity here, that they can keep the farm in their name, keep growing, their kids and grandkids can still draw income off of that property, and grow for years, have great families, great lives. It's a great opportunity. You know, there's not a lot of choices anymore for farmers. You can sell it, and let's be honest, none of our neighbors are gonna buy up two thousand acres of black dirt, good dirt. It's gonna go to corporations, insurance companies are buying up ground, we see it every day. It's not our local neighbors anymore. You're not gonna see family farms in our area necessarily grow. They might buy a piece or two here and there, but for the most part, it's gonna be a corporation that's buying it for investment. Or you can watch the neighbor down the road come in and cash rent it. Every four or five years, your kids are gonna go through hell trying to decide if their really good friend does a good job farming, and this one does, and they fight back and forth, and it's just a headache they don't have, shouldn't have to go through. Plus, to be honest, to watch somebody else farm your ground, are they ever gonna do it as good as what you did? And the Margaret family have been pretty damn good neighbors and pretty damn good farmers. We've all respected and looked up to them for a lot of years. So, we're gonna be missed, they're good people. But we're excited to still have them as part of our community as always, and, uh, to grow. I, county board, I appreciate everything you guys are doing with this. I, I, I may be here pro for the project, but I respect the hell out of the fact that you guys are sitting here, you're asking the tough questions, you're covering our backs. It means the world to me. That's exactly what you guys are supposed to do and are doing, and I appreciate that. I also ask that, what are we gonna do if we don't have this income? Is there something that the county board's doing to help us find the next big business to come to town? Are we gonna limit it? I'm all about landowner rights. I'm not even, to be honest with you, a hundred percent here just because of land or solar or anything like that, renewable. To me, it's more like the farm bureau. I'm a firm believer that a landowner should be able to do whatever the hell he wants to do with his property. You wanna build another barn, build another barn. There's nothing the neighbor should be able to say. And one of the guests here today, we were talking about years ago, there's several businesses that because of a byproduct used, people didn't want it in the neighborhood, stunk. A lot of truck track. But it was a lot of neighbors, no matter what, they had been tired of it and tired of the smell, but you knew that it was hopefully gonna bring back all of our kids to the family farms of theirs. And it brought them all back. And it's great to see those kind of businesses and opportunities like this. And now this may be an opportunity for somebody to have, you know, a job on this solar farm, you know, keep their family here in Edgar County, where we're spending money here in Paris. I just see, I see a lot of good. A lot more than I've ever seen bad with this. And, and guys, I've touched it, I've seen it, spent the last twenty years being a part of these projects from start to finish. You asked the expert a while ago, you know, how long has he been doing this? And he said ten years. We literally went through the life cycle of a few different solar farms. We went in, built them twenty years ago, we went in after twelve or thirteen years because of new technology, took the solar panels off, put on new ones. They signed a new lease, the county got their new rates, the landowner got his new rates, company's making more money. It was a win for everybody again, and they extended it out, how many more years? Don't believe all the record, all the bullshit you hear on television. Every company, and whether it be coal, or nuclear, or gas, everybody's subsidized, don't buy into that, don't buy into the China mix. We all put a piece of China up to our ear every day, and we don't seem to mind it, you know? So, don't, don't worry about that kind of stuff, but, county board, appreciate it. Your diligence, that's all I've got.
Thank you very much, Mr. Peterson. Really appreciate your testimony. Questions for Mr. Peterson? First from members of the county board. From members of units of local government, including school districts. From, uh, members of the public. Edgar County residents first, and those who own ground. Anybody with questions for him from Edgar County? Anybody from out of county with questions for Mr. Peterson about his testimony? Questions from Edgar County staff and consultants, Mr. Kite?
More out of curiosity than anything, where were the projects that were decommissioned?
Texas, North Texas.
And what, the, it sounds like, were some of them repowers, or were they all being removed?
These were all, these were all, uh, one was like a fifteen-year project. Uh, it was a total of three thousand acres. One of the landowners decided not to re-up. Don't know the reasons why, but he just didn't. So when we repowered the project, we actually expanded it, another three thousand acres onto the west side. But there was a three hundred acre chunk on the south, and a three hundred acre chunk on the north that was decommissioned.
And I assume that, on that one, it was the developer that was doing that decommissioning?
Yes, the, well, the developer paid us as contractors to come over and do it, obviously.
Yeah, understand. Are any of those three, just for my identification and the board, but were any of those three where the governmental body had to come in and decommission, or they all developer?
Developer did all of them. Because, and again, we were in the middle of a repower slash expansion, so it made it easy, we were already on site, we just did it out and decommissioned.
Okay, so all three were done by the developer, paid for by the developer?
Yes.
Completed by the developer, et cetera, right? Okay. What were, what was the, were they all fifteen years-ish, somewhere in that range?
I'm, I'm ballparking on that. I, it, it was an existing project, one that we actually didn't build originally. So I don't know the complete duration, but I'm guessing that twelve to fifteen year range is what we were seeing at the time.
Okay, I appreciate your information. Thank you.
Sorry.
Alright.
Any questions from Edgar County State's Attorney, Phil Dobelstein?
Come on, Phil, I know you're awful.
I just feel bad because Phil had some questions, and I had kind of skipped over him because I thought he wasn't gonna, you know? Most states attorneys don't have the guts to show up at these things. So I, I think your state's attorney, by his presence here and his participation, is showing that he is invested in your community. Many other counties, they'll just have Mr. Kite or some other attorney sitting at this table, and they don't even come anywhere near. In fact, I've advised, most states attorneys don't come in, because it might not get pretty for you. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Dobelstein. Alright, then, uh, Mr. Uphoff, do you have any questions for the witness?
No, sir.
Okay. Final questions for Mr. Peterson come from members of the board. Mr. Peterson, thank you for your testimony, you may step down. Okay, gentleman in the black t-shirt, let's go. Good evening, sir. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give shall be true?
Yes.
Okay, state your name, please.
Kevin Bunker, K-E-V-I-N-B-U-E-N-K-E-R.
B-U-E-N-K-E-R.
Little German.
Good, good German name.
Got it.
Alright, where, where you live?
To Topless.
To Topless, that's-
T-town, Germantown.
That's Effingham County, isn't it?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, so you get three minutes?
Yes, sir.
Alright, and I'll, uh, and when you get to have about thirty seconds left, I'll let, I'll let you know.
Okay.
Go ahead again.
Go back, my name's Kevin Bunker, with the operating engineers of Lake Forty-One out of Terre Haute, Indiana. We're here in support of this project, we're in no way affiliated with IA or any of this. We're here just to support that they're willing to sign a PLA and put local tradesmen to work. I represent, I currently have forty-three members that live in Edgar County alone, along with eight certified apprentices that are sitting here. And with their PLA certification, uh, coming along with this project, that guarantees you you're not gonna have a migrant workforce coming through that will cause a lot of upset neighbors there. Our guys, when they come to these projects, uh, you want to talk about Mr. Loomis's economics reports? Uh, I think Miss Bell represented saying that, uh, people won't be spending stuff in their money in Paris? Yeah, they do. My guys buy six pack of beers when they leave the town. We're cheersers, we're smokers, we're construction workers, we're not the most fit people in the world, but we're here, we spend money, I mean, uh, on, on average, uh, most of these jobs, being that they're prevailing wage in a year-long duration, they're gonna be from eighty thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand dollar a year positions, and that's gonna be full, um, retirement and insurance for their families. I will have kids buying new trucks off your Ford lots up here, trust me, when this money rolls in, they can't get a new diesel truck fast enough. So you will see stuff local. Uh, the other sites that we've built down here is in Clark County, and Cumberland County, and Coles. Uh, we've watched all these people come in, they, they spend this money, like I said, at your local restaurants. There's food trucks that show up down here at Clark County. People started businesses. If you feel there's a need for a new business coming, eh, get one, go. This is a golden opportunity, you guys are gonna have a four hundred million dollar investment in this county. That's unreal. Tell me the last time you even had a four million dollar investment up here. I mean, it's just, this is amazing, what it does for your local rock quarry. I represent them workers over here at Charleston Stone. They're gonna be working Saturdays to produce the aggregate that's gonna go on this. It's just the influx of cash that happens, not counting all your big tax lines, it is great. It is really good for the workers around. We have the operators, we do try and place the local guys here first. We represent nineteen counties in Illinois, seventeen in Indiana. We do try, the Edgar County guys will be the first guys, they'll have a divvy, guys and ladies, we have three females up here. But, um, they have the first opportunities for these, and then we move out from there. Because we want to place our workers as close to these projects as possible, because they, they make more money. They don't want to spend an hour and a half on the road, but we do have the capability to do it. We just keep expanding that circle and getting here. So, I just, you guys are doing great, you've asked, you've asked a lot of educated questions to the Edgar County residents out here. Uh, hats off, we've been going to a lot of these meetings lately, in Coles and everything else. Your guys' questions have been spot-on, polite, uh, this is the most calm debater room, and you've seen a bunch of them, this is, this has been a very well, uh, well-spoken group.
You've got thirty seconds, sir.
Yes, sir. We'll, we'll just leave it at that. We, we highly support this, and I hope you guys do too.
How many, uh, Edgar County peoples do you have in your union?
I have forty-three members in Edgar County living.
Oh.
Yes.
And what's your, what's your union?
Uh, operating engineers. We run all the heavy equipment.
Mr. Farnham asked the question. Okay. So you have forty-three, forty-three operating engineers in Edgar County?
That live in Edgar County, that are residents here. And atypically on projects this size, um, we usually see anywhere from forty to seventy-five operators alone on these projects, depending on their timelines of construction. If it's a little quicker, it gets expedited up, otherwise for a two-year-and-a-half project, we'd recommend, we'd recommend about that fifty, or we're probably gonna sit again.
Alright, any other questions for, uh, Mr. Bunker from the county board? Questions for Mr. Bunker from members of units of local government, including school districts? Questions from the public, anybody? Mr. Kite?
No question.
Mr. Dobelstein?
No question.
Mr. Uphoff?
No, sir.
Final questions come from the board. Mr. Bunker, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
By the way, you hit it three seconds shy of three minutes, that's pretty darn good.
Kind of rattled off quick.
Okay, gentleman in the black jacket.
It is black.
Is it?
Yeah.
Didn't know if it was a jacket or a hoodie. Sir, do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give shall be true?
I do.
Okay, and what's your name?
John, J-O-N, Grubb, G-R-U-B-B.
Mr. Grubb, uh, where are you from?
I'm from Makin County.
Okay, that's, that's beautiful Makin County. I've done some hearings up there, that's, that's a great place to be. Alright, uh, you're an out-of-county guy, so you get three minutes, and, uh, you may begin right now.
Mr. Peterson and Bunker both hit this thing on the head, uh, pretty much stole my thunder, in a sense. So I'm gonna address this in a different way. I'm the field representative for Labor's Local One Fifty-nine. I am a laborer, my wife's a laborer, my son's a laborer, my niece is an apprenticeship, has a laborer. I'm gonna go off of Clark County real quick. We had two major solar projects in Clark County in the last two years. River Ferry and, uh, County Run. One of my main tasks is recruiting. I do all the interviews for our apprenticeship. When we started out in Clark County, Clark County was one of our lower number counties out of eight for Local One Fifty-nine. And we put about seventy people in Clark County, uh, to work that are now members of Local One Fifty-nine. The same exact thing is gonna happen here. It has to. Throughout my career, I've worked in Edgar County, uh, multiple different times. Uh, I spent two months in the Super Eight here. Uh, spent my money to buy food here, to gas, cigarettes, chew. Uh, that's gonna happen over and over again. The people are gonna spend their money here. I'm not telling you that people aren't gonna stay in Indiana to work on this project, or that people aren't gonna stay a county over, but people are gonna spend their money here. We have no choice to, but to. The Clark County thing, we, I, personally, it, it means so much to me to be a part of changing people's lives. A single mother, three kids, is a laborer out of Local One Fifty-nine. She told me, John, I've never made more than fifteen dollars an hour in my life, and now I'm buying a house. Uh, people get second cars, it, it, it improves their family life dramatically, these projects do. The other thing that wasn't touched on is the things that the tax revenue brings to Edgar County. Uh, I worked on this new high school, I put the footings in there. Drove every day from Makin County to over here. I want people in Edgar County doing that. We have so much work going on in our eight counties that this, this, this membership has to grow over here, and it will, I promise you. People that are making fifteen dollars an hour and, and barely getting by, get an opportunity to work on one of these projects for more than double that, plus have health insurance and a retirement, they're coming. I, I promise you, I will get them.
You have thirty seconds left.
I'm good.
Okay. Yes, you are. Thank you for your testimony. County board members, any questions?
You're not electrical?
I'm laborers, we're, we're the heart and soul of these jobs. Physical labor.
Any other questions from the county board? Members of units of local government? Regular folk? Any questions for Mr. Grubb? Not regular folk, the lawyers, Mr. Kite?
No.
Mr. Dobelstein?
No.
Mr. Uphoff?
I, I will just ask a couple. Um, when you were, you were talking about recruiting and, and, and building that base, so you've had experience doing that in Clark County, right?
Yes, absolutely.
And then, once, uh, you, you build up that base and they, they start working the jobs here, then they get the opportunity to not only work other jobs that may come up here, but, um, can bounce to other counties and, and continue working, right?
Yeah, so our eight counties, we, we dispatch work for all those eight counties, so like me coming from Makin to here. But the other part of that is my union card's good in all fifty states and Canada, and I've traveled the country. Pipelines, nuclear power plants, they all have the opportunity to do that.
So it'll open a lot of doors for, for continuous work going forward?
That is correct.
Right. And then, when you were talking about, uh, being on the, on the job site, and then, I maybe should ask this question to the operator also, but, um, do you, you were talking about spending money here, you were mostly talking about personal items, but are there job-related, uh, factors and, and payments that are gonna be coming out? Are other local businesses gonna benefit from the day-to-day stuff that you're doing out of the job site?
I bought a pair of a hundred and fifty dollar Munk boots at the feed store. I mean, a lot of personal stuff, yes, but like when you, I might fill up with gas in Makin and drive over here and eat gas to get back, and the money's gonna be spent, you know, not every dime, but it's gonna get spent.
And on the job site, are there, you know, breakdowns and perks needed and things like that, that are gonna utilize local stores and businesses?
Absolutely.
Alright.
So, so just for instance, like the Home Depot in Mattoon, uh, Alberisi just built a, a solar farm over there. They had a very big line of credit at Home Depot in Mattoon for, for stuff needed on the job.
That's all.
Okay, thanks. Final questions come from members of the county board. Mr. Grubb, thank you so much for your testimony, really appreciate it. Alright, any folks, uh, in favor? Want to testify? Okay, alright. He thought Mr. Grubb was gonna go sit down, but Mr. Grubb, uh, faked him out and went right when the gentleman thought he was going left. Alright, uh, now, time for folks who are opposed to the application for this solar project and battery energy storage facility. Anybody who would like to testify who's opposed? Alright, folks who are neutral on the issue? Now I gotta turn my page to see what's next. Written comments, Mr. Kite, have you received any written comments on this project?
I'm not aware of any, I don't know if any kind of board members received any, but-
Anybody have any written public comment sent to you? Okay. No written comments. Alright, public comment. It's an opportunity to come forward, you don't have to be sworn in, you do have to give your name, but you don't have to be cross-examined by anybody. Anybody want to make public comment for three minutes? See hands? Yes, Mr. Wright?
Once again, my name's Phil Wright, and this is basically directed you guys over on the board. I understand that the person that owns property has the right to do with whatever they want to, sell it, lease it, do whatever. And I'm always for the personal property rights of people. But I stand here tonight opposed to this because there are many, many more places it can be done. I just hate to see good farm, prime farmland, especially here in central Illinois, taken out of production for a project like this, and I know it's gonna bring in money, I understand that. And I just, I'm very pessimistic down the road, will we need to put this farmland back in production, say in ten years, twenty years? I know we overproduce a lot of crops right now, prices are low, it's very tough for farmers. for farmers. And I understand Mike and his dad. I understand all of it. But personally, I just, it bothers me to drive down, I was driving down forty-nine down the night going for supper, and I was looking to the west, sun setting over the tops of those cornfields. That's Illinois. That's why I live here. I have farmland out close to this project. I don't know in years to come, driving down those country roads, looking at these solar farms, if that's what I wanna see. I don't know. You know, like I said, I don't condemn anybody for doing what they wanna do to their farmland. But I do know, and it's, I'm from a religious background, but in the Bible and Genesis, God said, "Let the earth bring forth vegetation, seed-bearing plants and fruit trees. Each bearing fruit with seed according to its kind." And I think that has a lot to do with this. I really do. And I think you can tell I'm pretty passionate about it. But I'm not opposed to solar farm. I'm just opposed to being put on prime agricultural farmland. I think there's places, I had a daughter who lived out west in the deserts, and they had them out there. Fine. Put them on Walmart parking lots. You know, the guys doing the construction, they could build them there. The money would all still come in, but I just think putting them on farmland is tough. But I realize that flat farmland is a lot easier to build on. But I just think take those considerations in. Look at the decommission. Look at property values. And I respect everyone in this room, all the ideas I've heard. And I really respect what you guys come up with and what you do throughout. Thank you to all of you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Really appreciate your comment. Thank you. Anybody else with All right, that closes public comment. Evidence from the county. Mr. Kite, do you have any evidence you would wish to present?
Likely not, but I would suggest we reserve that for when they, well, I guess one question for the county board is whether they wanna recall any of the witnesses from the developer and ask them questions, and that's up to the county board. I don't know that they do.
I've got a question from Forrehan from the other night.
Ready to go, or just?
Sure. Hang on, Mr. Farnham. I've just gotta remind him. You remember on the night of October sixteenth, when you swore to tell the truth?
Yes.
Do you understand that you remain under oath as you're asked questions this evening?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Mr. Evans is under oath, and so, Mr. Farnham, you go ahead with questions.
The other night when you were given, like, the overview of your company, I think you said that you'd done like thirty or, maybe not you, but the company had done thirty or forty projects, but you were basically a battery storage company. So how many actual solar farms has your company done?
So, yes, we have focused on battery energy storage as a company as a whole leading up to this point. So our company has not built their own solar farm, but what I will say is, number one, that the kind of co-located battery energy storage with solar is somewhat new, and we've kind of gone where the market tells us. Number two is that people in our company have years and years and years of experience. I personally come from a solar background, actually, solar and wind. I'm very thankful I'm not here for a wind farm. I've done plenty of these for wind farms, and I'm extremely thankful that that's not why I'm here. So I spent a long time with a previous company doing solar. My boss has done solar. He's done gas, combined cycle plants. But our executive leadership and our development team as a whole has tons of experience with solar.
But the actual company, this is your first solar project?
That's right.
Okay.
I'm hearing now we have operating solar.
I mean, all the conversations that we've had, you know, you've been to several county board meetings and stuff. I can tell that you had experience in solar, but that just struck out to me. I gotta think about that later, this is your kind of your first project. But I realize you have a lot of experience.
That's right. That's right.
You know, in all the conversations we've had, you seem very knowledgeable about it.
Thank you.
But I, quite honestly, six months to a year ago, I didn't know anything about anything. But I've been educated myself and just, I'm very knowledgeable about it.
Well, I wouldn't go that far, but yeah, thank you for the kind words.
Thank you, Mr. Farnham. Anything else from members of the county board? Okay, this is just the time for the county board to recall witnesses, so they get to ask the questions. Go ahead, have a seat, Mr. Evans. Thank you. Mr. Kite, do you want to just chat with your folks about any other witnesses they would like to recall? We've already had Mr. Evans. There was Mr. Polling, who was the sound acoustics expert. Anybody wanna bring him back from, I think he's in Chicago, isn't he, Mr. Uphoff?
Minnesota.
Minnesota, Chicago.
What I would suggest for the county board, if you wanna call a witness back, you can. You could also, you don't have to, though. You know, it's up to you. If there's a topic you wanna hear about that you haven't heard about that might be relevant to the ordinance, you can do that. But I would suggest, Mr. Keynes is, to the extent the county might have evidence, it would only be documentary in nature, and I'm fairly positive where we won't need it. So I would suggest we just reserve that.
Okay. Yeah, the other witnesses, there was the fire safety guy from New York City. There was the environmental health sciences PhD from Canada. I don't know if we wanna drag those fellows back. Ms. Rowley, the engineer on the decommissioning, she's still here. Anybody has any final decommissioning? And Ms. Rowley, you're from...
I'm from the Decatur area originally.
But you live in Chicago, which is just south of Minnesota, according to my geography. And Mr. Palma-Caz is from New Jersey, and I don't know that he's gonna make the trip back out here anytime soon. And you can always get Dr. Loomis, 'cause he just travels around downstate Illinois testifying about economic impacts and taxes, so I guess he'd be pretty easy to get back here. All right, well, Mr. Kite, I will allow you to reserve the opportunity to submit evidence, like you said, documentary evidence. And if there's anybody else that they, your client, the county board wants to call, we can discuss that at our next Closing statements is next on the agenda. Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Uphoff.
Sorry, since you just mentioned Dr. Loomis, he had an opportunity to be able to look into his report to provide an answer for the question from the board in relation to the EAV. So would it be okay if we just put that on the record now?
Yeah, yeah, you can do it just in offer of proof here, and let's just do it.
Okay. So as an offer of proof, the 2029 fair cash value would be twenty million six hundred thirty-two thousand six hundred and seventeen dollars, and that EAV, I think that EAV would be then six million eight hundred seventy-seven thousand five hundred and thirty-nine dollars. So those, I think, were the two numbers that were requested.
And that came from Dr. Loomis's report that's already in the application?
Yes, sir. He was just able to go pull it up on his computer and identify those specific numbers.
Gotcha. Okay, based on that, are you guys satisfied? Okay. All right, real good. Closing statements. Do you wanna do closing statements tonight, counsel, or do you wanna wait until, because we're not gonna finish tonight?
Can I have a moment to discuss some of my clients?
Yeah, and if you need time, you know, because the only two things left on, in the order of proceeding are closing statements and then deliberations and vote. And I don't think the deliberations and vote are gonna happen tonight, because there was a hundred and seventy-two-page exhibit submitted, and...
It's tentatively planned on November fifth.
Okay. We'll take that up when these boys are... Thank you, though. Thank you, though, Mr. Chairman.
That is something that comes from all of us, not just me.
Okay, good.
I think preliminarily, I heard Seth was in this year, and I could hear the chairman in this year, but it was...
He just said November five.
November fifth would be the preliminary. Do we know it?
It would be roughly ten or ten-thirty in the morning.
Immediately following the county board.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, I got you.
All right, folks, look at your calendars. November five, around ten a.m.
Correct.
Would we be in this room, Mr. Chairman, or would we be...
We would be in courtroom two, down the stairs.
Okay, gotcha.
On the second level.
Gotcha. Do we know if it's open? Is it always open?
It's always open.
Gotcha. Understood.
We already have it reserved.
Mr. Keynes, if we may, if it be permitted, we would reserve the closing argument for November fifth meeting. That way, give everybody a chance to digest some of this, just in case there's a potential for reopening of anything that would need to be addressed. We could do that, and then sum it up after that and then let them move forward.
All right. What we'll do is, the hearing will be recessed until November five, and at that time, we will take up evidence from Edgar County from Mr. Kite, and whatever he has, or if he has nothing, we'll address that. And then, closing statements. And closing statements, how I like to work it is, the applicant gets to give a closing statement. And then, if anybody is opposed and wishes to give a closing statement, they can. But I would ask that folks who are opposed pick one person as a representative to give kind of a, and a closing statement is just a summary of your thoughts on the evidence. Okay? It's not bringing in new evidence. The evidence is closed, with the exception of any evidence Mr. Kite brings in. But, so, closing statements would be a twenty-minute closing statement from Mr. Uphoff, and then, anybody who's opposed, I would like to have one representative of the opposition stand up, and you would have twenty minutes also. Then after that, the county board will deliberate and vote on the application, and the deliberations take some time, because how that looks, for those of you who haven't been at one of these before, Mr. Kite prepares a summary of the evidence. They're called findings of fact, and it's something in many of these, all of these types of cases, there has to be some findings of fact. That's basically a summary of the evidence. And the board has to approve the findings of fact. They may change anything that Mr. Kite prepares. And then, after that, then Mr. Kite presents the board with proposed conditions. In the event this is passed, the board can impose conditions on the applicant, on the company. Things they have to do, rules they have to follow, and procedures that must be met before they can get the approval to operate. And so, those conditions will be discussed by Mr. Kite with the board, and then after that. And that whole process takes forty-five minutes, maybe an hour at most, but forty-five minutes to an hour at most. And then, the board votes. And the vote is real simple. There's eyes or not eyes. So is there anything else from you, Mr. Uphoff?
Just a bit of clarification, or just edification, I guess. At this point in time, barring the county board needing to reopen for some potential evidence that's been reserved, or if there's a specific request from the applicant from the county board to be resolved, it's not going to reopen for public comment. Is that correct?
No, there's no more public comment. There's no more evidence, with the exception of Mr. Kite has reserved the opportunity to present, I think you said, some documentation, perhaps? Yeah.
So then, if there's not gonna be any additional evidence from any objectors, I guess I was of the impression that in order to provide a closing argument, you had to have provided some testimony. Since there's been no testimony from any objectors, would there be an opportunity for closing argument from objectors? I guess I thought that might be foreclosed.
Let me, let me look at the rules. I gotta look at the rules, because every county's The only thing with respect to closing statements in the rules are the final paragraph of Rule Six. Closing statements are limited to twenty minutes per person. Non-interested parties are not entitled to make a closing statement. I don't see anything here that says they must have testified. Mr. Kite, is that, what about Rule Five?
That's what I'm thinking.
That's all on cross-examination. That has nothing with respect to closing statement. I think Rule Six is the only one that addresses closing.
I agree with you, but I also agree that typically, to present a closing, it would be somebody who's presented some evidence.
I guess I'll just ask this question. Is there any folks who are opposed who wanna make a closing statement? Mr. Wright shaking his head, no? And that's all right, you know? Okay.
Okay. Just wanted to give clarification. Thank you.
Yeah. All right. So when it's time for closing statements, you will have twenty minutes, and then we'll go right to the deliberations.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Uphoff?
No, sir.
Mr. Kite, do you have anything else? Mr. Dobelstein, do you have anything else?
No.
Mr. Chairman, do you, or any of members of the board? I just wanna say, okay, I just wanna say this, and then we'll go. This was a really good public hearing. I've done some that have just been train wrecks that have been off the rails from the get-go. And Ms. Lilly's smiling. But I appreciate the questions from y'all the other night. Ms. Keys and Ms. Lilly, Mr. Williams, Mr. and Mrs. Helton, tonight, Ms. Bell, Mr. Wright, both nights, appreciate the questions, and appreciate the questions from these folks. You know, to be an elected official, that's a terrible job. I mean, if you think about it. But these guys volunteer. I mean, they get paid twelve dollars a meeting or what have you. I don't know. But it's not easy to do what they do. So I wanna say, thank you. You guys have done an excellent job and excellent questions throughout, and I really appreciate the opportunity to get to work with you all, because I've worked with some county boards that have been some humdingers. And you guys, thank you. And from the applicant, I've had Mr. Uphoff present cases in front of me five or six times. And there's a reason he gets hired by companies a lot, because he's excellent. Your team, Mr. Uphoff, an excellent job. Ms. Connor comes over from Indiana as a legal representative as well, and it's been a pleasure getting to work with her. And all of you guys have done an excellent job. So appreciate how well this hearing went. When I get home, my wife's usually asleep, but sometimes I will tell her the next day how bad something was. But I haven't had any complaints about this.
The county board chairman would like to say...
Yes, Mr. Voight.
Thank you.
Yes, you have the floor, sir.
We appreciate the job you have done tonight.
Thank you.
I wanted to thank each and every one of you from the different parts of state, especially those from Edgar County. We appreciate you helping us and contributing to the decision that we have to make. So thank you, and congratulations for being interested, involved since, thank you, on behalf of the board.
Thank you very much, Chairman Voight. All right, the Edgar County Board is in recess. There will be a general board meeting at nine a.m. on November five, and this public hearing is in recess until November five, two thousand twenty-five, at ten o'clock a.m. or shortly thereafter. It will be held in courtroom two in this building on the second floor at one fifteen West Court Street in Paris, Illinois. The Edgar County Board... The Edgar County Board is in recess until that time. Thank you very much.